One second.
Thank you.
Good, thanks.
Have these new chairs?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
I have the same issue, very perplexed.
We need help.
I would choose, we should model with the table.
The guy just looked up, I was just...
It is August 4th. We have a council workshop starting at 11:45. It's 11:45, so we're going to get going. First thing on the agenda is... We, do we need a quorum for a council? Okay, so then we should... So I'm going to take a slight pause and hopefully we can get a council member or two to show up. And if you would definitely have some patience with us, we'll probably put this on a 10-minute pause at this moment in time. We've got Redwood Alley Activation mural? Or are we changing? So Dana, go ahead.
That's right. All right, good afternoon, everyone. Council Mayor, I'm Dana Pearson with the Economic Development Division. Today, we're going to look at a motion that was put forward by the Committee on Public Art for the Redwood Alley Beautification. So back on June 10th of this year, the Committee on Public Art made a motion to the City Council to allocate funds in the amount of $15,000 to complete the third and final alley for the alley beautification project. It relates to council goals of economic development, specifically focusing on grants passes downtown as a vibrant neighborhood and attractive destination. This is a little background on the Committee on Public Art. The purpose of the committee is to engage the community and enrich public spaces through placement of original art, creating a unique sense of place, engagement, enjoyment, and pride for all. So this committee also provides the City Council with information pertaining to public art. They create opportunities for placement of art in public locations. And they also promote collaboration between city departments, artists, architects, developers, and property owners. This is a list of your current committee members. Robin Forbes is the chair, she's here today. We also have Susan Jordan, she's the vice chair. Cindy Hernandez, Michael Holzinger, Cal Kenny, he's a past chair, he's here with us today as well. Colleen Milligan, Deanna Morse, who's on, with us virtually. Crystal Pyron and Eva Shaw. In March of 2019, this project was established as the Downtown Alley Activation and Beautification Project. And it's LB6378. It was supported by both the Tourism Advisory Committee and the Committee on Public Art to be established. And the goal was really to transform three downtown pedestrian alleyways into more dynamic public spaces. The hope was to enhance downtown activities and safe spaces, encourage economic opportunities for businesses to create some event space, provide aesthetically pleasing corridors, and also strategically placing art to be discoverable for visitors. The hope was that these alleys would become a vibrant addition to our historic downtown. So this was the first alley to be completed. The Nature Trail Alley Beautification was that project. It's the alleyway that connects the Osprey parking lot to Sixth Street. And it was completed in 2021. You can see that it was designed to be like a nature trail with some large steel flower sculptures to draw your eye and encourage you to walk through the alleyway. The Wings Alley Beautification is the second project. That's the alleyway connecting the Beaver parking lot to Sixth Street. It's currently in progress. An artist has been selected and has started to work. This picture that you see here is the, is what's already completed. And then the artist is actually starting on the second mural today. This alleyway will have up to three murals, or will have three murals when completed. And we're hoping it'll be completed in 2025. Then the final alleyway is the Redwood Alley Beautification. This is what we're proposing here. The alleyway connects the Redwood parking lot to the Sixth Street. And if funded, we would estimate that it would be completed in 2026 or 2027. When you're looking at these pictures, the one on the left is looking from Sixth Street towards the Redwood parking. And then the one on the right is looking from the alleys towards Sixth Street. Some background on how these projects, the process for these projects. The Committee on Public Art typically puts out a request for qualifications. And the reason for that is it really allows for flexibility and creativity and interpretation. The, the COPA will select the artists and then work with that artist to finalize the piece. The best practice for something that's site-specific like this is to work on the design in place as it needs to be designed. But for this drafted RFQ, the COPA has drafted one for the Redwood Alley. They've discussed it at monthly meetings and various, they've discussed various artistic themes and also solicited input from the Historic Building and Sites Commission. I have attached to your packet the sample RFQ, if you want to take a look at it. In that, you can see more details, but it really is putting it out there to create an immersive piece that invites viewers, create a sense of beauty, intrigue, and wonder. They want to capture the essence and spirit of the Redwood Forest. And this particular RFQ does note that sculptural approaches are preferred. And the hope is that the work will cause the public to pause and enter and deeply enjoy the space, engage and play, and even record their presence in the space. We want to see people taking selfies. The cost implications for this project are really to be determined. The committee has proposed a $15,000 request based on the previous request that went to council for the second alleyway. But it is variable. So for example, sculpture-based art may be more expensive than a mural, so there could be some variation there. The revenue source is LB6378. It does not currently have funding for this third project. But the funds previously, for the previous pieces came through this project and were funded through the General Fund and Lansing Buildings Fund. Community contributions are a possibility for generating revenues. That could be sponsors, donations, or grants. The cost implication for that would just really be staff time and soliciting, coordinating those contributions. And there is just a note here that providing matching funds is preferred and it could be more competitive in this scenario where you're seeking grant funding. The call to action is today, August 4th, and it is at council's discretion. You can move to action or move to an additional workshop. And here are some alternatives to review. The council could allocate $15,000 to the LB6378 and then direct staff on which source of funding to use. It would require us to make a budget adjustment to the FY26 budget. But, so some potential funding sources would be General Fund Contingency or Lansing Buildings Fund. Another alternative would be to allocate partial funding to the project and then direct staff to seek contributions from the community for the remainder amount, remaining amount. And then another alternative could be to approve the $15,000 for the LB6378 and allocate it to the FY26 budget or deny the request at this time and review it at a later date. So now I'm available to answer any questions. And again, we do have some members of COPA available too, if there's some questions that you might have for them.
Thank you, Dana. Any questions from council? No questions from council. Okay, thank you. Bring it back to council, any further discussion? Kathleen?
Well, I'm inclined to want to put this on hold because we have a lot of other things that the city is looking at to allocate funding towards. So my preference was, would be to deny this request at this time and review at a later date.
Any further discussion? Indra?
I love, I love it. I love the idea. I love the murals on the wall. I think it does help reduce graffiti and it's beautiful. However, we do not have funding for it and we are crunched for funds. We're going to be putting out a lot of money here soon. And I just think we should save for it. I think we also have a very generous community. And I would propose that we seek fundraising sources for it. I think we could raise the money that way potentially. But I don't want to burden the taxpayers overall with another project. That's not our priority right now. So I would vote to table it for now.
Any further discussion? Rick, and then Eric.
I'm, it's on to COPA, and I would be in favor of supporting the partial funding and then seeking community contributions. Thank you.
Eric?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what was said here last, by the other councillors. The city is going to be strapped for funds, for lack of better terms. But the art, the artwork is awesome looking. I mean, it would clean up, the city would look better. It's just priorities have to be made. And what I'd be in favor of is either tabling it or trying to get community, community funding donations instead of having the city taxpayers pay for this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I'd be looking back for council to formulate a direction for staff. Rick?
I'd like to make a motion that we, the council allocate partial funding and direct staff to seek community contributions for the remainder. And if discussion involves how much partial funding, I think that might be appropriate.
Okay, so council, you have a motion on the table to grant partial funding and seek other means of funding at a later date. Is there a second? Seeing none, I would bring it back for discussion and/or some action. Indra?
I'll make a motion that we table this for a later date.
Okay, you have a motion on the table to table the discussion to a later date. Do we have a second on that? Kathleen, any further discussion? Go ahead and do a roll call vote. Rick?
No.
Eric?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rick, I mean, sorry, Rob?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
And Victoria?
Yes.
All right, majority goes to table this for further, at further date. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Public Safety Service and Funding.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor, Council. We have, of course, a presentation from staff. We also have a presentation from the committee. And I think Alan Hartford has volunteered to be that individual. So maybe we'd start with the committee first and then staff will follow after the committee.
Perfect.
Do we have that slide presentation that we sent to you? Did you, okay, okay. That's fine, okay. Or is it, okay, yeah. If we don't have a slide presentation here. So I've got the slides printed out. So thank you for your time. My name's Alan Hartford, and the Chair of the Public Safety Committee. And I believe Jay Meredith is listening in to take any, any other questions that I can't answer. Jay Meredith is our, is our vice chair. So to give you a little background, we've been meeting for about five or six times already. And we've had numerous presentations from fire, police. And we've tried to get a good handle on what the issues facing both the departments are. And right now, what a, a big common theme we've been getting is staffing. And it's not that the police chief or the fire chief have come to us and said, "We need you guys to advocate for us to get staffing." That's not what's been going on. But they've, they've certainly pushed for us to understand the, the concerns they've had and the challenges they've had. And I've looked over the presentations, can be given a little bit here. And it really brings to fore a number of those issues that we've been presented with. And I'll just, I'll just give you a few that have been brought to our fore. And training ramp-up time is a big one. Family leave requirements are creating an extra burden on the, on the departments. Overtime needs and increased costs are definitely straining the departments. Retention difficulties, particularly in the fire department. Many of the firefighters have been trained and work here for a while, then go to other departments. departments, meant for being a big draw. Recruitment challenges, particularly in PD. High work tempo. The staffings remain the same, but the amount of work that they've been asked to do and the amount of interactions, and many times those negative interactions, have really increased the strain, the stress, and the undesirability of continuing to work here. And finally, wage equality issues. So those are some of the things, and I think they'll be approached, many of those are being addressed in the later presentation on public safety. So we've had a presentation, real brief presentation by fire, and I think that that's going to be brought up here later on about a potential way to offset some overtime costs with some FTE positions. So that's a possibility that you'll hear more about. We also were briefed in the early stages of some fee generation possibilities by the fire department. And then police, early last year, the city management recommended hiring four police officers to help get out of critical staffing shortage. And as timing goes, as far as hiring individuals, it's relatively easier to hire a firefighter than it is a police officer simply because of the FTO time, once they're out of the academy and things like that. So that increases the amount of time it takes to get a police officer ready to work on the street on their own, ready to go versus in the fire department. So both agencies acknowledge suboptimal staffing levels. Staffing has been at a critical level for quite some time. Both police and fire overtime costs are significantly higher than historical averages. So these are some of the things you're facing in your budgetary work and things you have to address. Last year, the city sought new revenue sources due to staffing criteria that was in the previous council. I'm sure many of you remember it, some of you were on council at that time. Highly unpopular extra taxes were floated at that time. They weren't actually floated out to the public. They were brought up in several discussion sessions. What was raised, what was finalized upon was a public safety fee that was added to the water bills. And that didn't go to hire any new individuals. It was strictly to fund a gap that was identified. But the public is now looking at their water bills and they're seeing a public safety fee, and they're not getting any increased staffing levels with that fee. It is what it is, but that's some of the interests we've been getting from the community being voiced to our committee. And then public discussion staffing sort of ceased after that fee was enacted. It was a critical situation at the time. The fee was basically passed. No additional funding was talked about. And then, at least publicly, there was no more push to get any additional staffing on board. Now, there might have been discussions, but from the public side of things, it was rather silent after that point. So that's a complaint we sort of heard from the public. There's been no mention, at least publicly in a large way like it was last year, for additional staffing in this cycle, in this budget cycle. In fact, there's a discussion of possibly in a couple of years, some sort of phased-in plan. The committee feels that that probably doesn't address the issues that we feel we've heard that need to be addressed sooner rather than later. But then again, that's your decision on what you decide to do. And the question was raised is, is there a staffing issue with police and fire in the city? And I think certainly from what we've been able to determine from our presentations, and certainly I'm sure from what you've heard, there is. But there doesn't seem to be the focus on it like there was last year. So financial considerations are always a concern. Again, that's, you know, a lot of your decision-making has to be taken into place. I understand you're being faced with several very important projects. But what's interesting is that if you, throughout my career in the fire service, whenever we had a very large decision to make, we always went back to our mission, our vision, and you look at your strategic goals, and public safety is even before fiscal stability. And I'm not saying that that's right and that's what you ought to do, but I'm saying that's how important it is to the public. And it is to you also. So we take this issue very seriously and we hope that the discussions that you guys enter into will take that into account as you move forward in your decision-making. So a couple of things that were brought up was, and you'll hear about this in your presentations, we had a budget presentation by City Finance. So we know that the average general fund revenue is about 38% currently. You've got a new policy that lets you spend down to 25%. Historically, you've been in the 40s over the last few years. So certainly, and I know you've got big decisions to make, you've just lost a $50 million grant to the water treatment plant, you're moving ahead on that, you've got homelessness issues to deal with. But at the same time, you've got a pad that, you know, we feel, and the public has at times said they felt, might be able to be utilized to enhance the public safety concerns that the city is certainly facing. It was brought up by one of our members, Jay Meredith, that there's LB capital funds that you could look at, different ways of spending. Again, that's outside of my realm, but it was brought up as a, something that you could think about, look into, and determine if that's appropriate or not. Again, that's all up to you to determine if that's the right way. But we want to make sure it's heard, that we feel that staffing is an issue. We've heard it loud and clear from both agencies, and we feel that we need to be in support of that and show that we've looked into the, some of the reasons for that staffing concerns, and we feel it's a very important and critical issue that you folks need to be talking about. And I think the public also understands that, you know, there's been some needs on public safety, but they don't understand how hard our members in public safety are actually working. They don't see the police officers and firefighters and their increased call loads because of what's going on in the city. They certainly know that the police and fire are out there, but I think that we're adding to the voice that, from the public, as well as trying to interpret the information for you, that staffing is an issue. And as you know, we put forward a motion that we suggested that this is taking the motion that was given almost, well, over a year ago, possibly even 18 months ago, that eight positions should be hired. Now, it's not our job to tell you where those positions go or anything like that, but we feel that that was a good recommendation back then, and it certainly hasn't changed. And we feel it's important to have that now. So those are sort of the thoughts that we put together so far. We're continuing to look at other ways that we can increase revenue, if there's some research we can do. This is the key point that I think needs to be heard from you folks since we're a new committee. One of our big things is, again, we work for you. So if there's something that you feel that needs to be researched, that's what we're here for. So let's say you think, "Well, my gosh, how does our staffing and police stand up to police staffing in other cities?" It's not a very easy question to answer, but that's something that we can research. Certainly, we would be using police and fire to help us with those research things, but that would be something we'd be taking the burden off of their staffs, allowing them to continue to do their work while we do some research work for you. So that's one of the things that I think you can look at this committee as, is a ability for you to ask questions, that we can assist police and fire staffs to do the research for and bring forward. Let me just make sure I've got all my points here. We want to coordinate the research, as I said, between all the departments. And one of the things you can consider as far as hiring goes, consider a phased approach. Phase one can add additional amount of staffing to both police and fire to address immediate urgent needs and provide time to study options for additional staffing in the future. We can conduct staffing workload and budget comparisons with our communities. Again, we're not saying that police and fire can't do that. They certainly can. But we also know that they're being pulled in many different directions. So we're here as an assist to them to get you the information you need. Consequently, we're also with them, if they have something they would like us to look into, we're able to do that also. We have a willing staff of people who volunteering their time, that want to be involved, they want to help out, and that's pretty much what we're here for. And then, of course, we can provide findings, our findings, to you to help you make better decisions as we move forward. So with that, I didn't have my PowerPoint presentation up there, but that's the genesis of what I wanted to say, so I'll throw it back to you for any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have council questions? And I would probably like not getting the nuts and bolts of the conversation, but like kind of more of a high level with the committee's recommendation. Eric and then Rob?
Thank you for coming and really appreciate what the committee does. Wanted to ask, you mentioned that it was eight, the motion that you made was eight personnel. I thought it was six.
No, it was eight.
It was eight, okay. And then the, can you explain what that eight is going to, briefly explain what that eight is going to benefit, aside from the obvious?
Sure. And all we were doing is going back to what the previous recommendation from city staff was back in the spring of last year. And those eight positions at that time, as I believe it were three police, couple fire, and somebody, and I can't recall exactly, I don't have the motion in front of me, I do have it in my notebook. But in general, what it was is to hire some police officers, some fire staff, as well as possibly one other person to work in the city to work on facility in support of both fire and police infrastructure. I can't, again, we weren't trying to say hire this many police officers, this many firefighters. We were saying, we weren't pretty much going with a recommendation that was put forward in the spring of last year of hiring eight personnel.
In terms of overtime, is that something you can speak to?
Yeah, so we did have a presentation, and I think the fire chief is probably going to talk about that. If he hasn't already talked about it, I'm not privy to all your private meetings, but there was a presentation offered us that there's a way that using overtime monies, because overtime monies are being spent at a higher level. And I don't want to get into somebody else's bailiwick here, but in general, we were given a presentation that maybe hiring some FTEs would offset some of those overtime costs, basically using the same amount of funds. You would have FTEs versus paying the overtime, and that would reduce the workload per person. In other words, you would have all these people being forced hired to come back to fill a position. You'd have fresher people to deal with it, and the budget hit would be somewhat negotiable either way. Again, I don't want to get into the specifics of that because of what the fire chief's realm is, but if I recall, that was pretty much closely what we were presented with.
Rob and then Joel and Indra?
Yeah, thanks, Alan. You mentioned that one of the things that the committee could do would be to look at other departments and so forth and give us kind of a comparison. And I'm just wondering, and I just don't remember the answer to this, I remember a partial answer when we discussed with city staff last year, but I'm just wondering if the committee has already looked at, for instance, the two-per-truck firefighters, the, you know, two in a truck, and I know that that's something we're to hear about later, but I'm just wondering if the committee has already looked at that in a comparative way around the state and how Grants Pass does compare? Because I don't remember hearing that from our staff last year, they may have, but has the committee looked at any of that? How many per truck and so forth?
Actually, this research was done before we were actually formed as a committee, because that was one of the things that did come from the DS last year during the discussion, was where are firefighters? It was strictly about, the question was for firefighters. Where are we as a city compared to other cities? So we did go out, and a number of us, and I was primarily heading that research, looked at 22 different departments in the state of Oregon that were around us, the 10 up, 10 below, ourselves, and Roseburg. Roseburg didn't fall in the 10 up, 10 below. And generally, it was found that our staffing levels are substandard. Most everybody else had at least three, some had four per engine. That our, most of the departments were in fire districts, has a whole different ability to gain different types of funding. That can be, you know, we have a dearth of automatic aid and mutual aid in this county simply because we don't have the robust departments around us, but most are more in districts, which allow them to have different funding sources. Their budgets, it's really hard to, you know, say sometimes where their budgets exactly were because different cities include different things in different places. Takes a lot of research into that to determine, you know, it's not exactly apples to apples, it's not even sometimes crab apples to apples. It's very, can be very different. But in general, we found out that we were understaffed and the pay levels were generally at the bottom of the scale, not near the top. But that's something that takes place during negotiations with you and with staff on contracts. But that was where the generality, we looked at base pay for firefighters, and we generally saw that the Grants Pass firefighters were near the bottom of the pay scale.
So, okay, so I'm trying to be a little more focused. I appreciate that. I know we're going to hear later from the fire chief when you talk about our current staffing is substandard, and I guess that would be, you know, as defined by some national accreditation people and so forth, and insurance guidelines and all that. I get that. But you said specifically that, I think you said, that you looked at 22 different departments. Now, so can you be a little more specific with those 22 departments as far as two-per-truck and so forth, or two-per-engine? You know, how many of them would be, if you know off the top of your head? If not, you can send us an email later, that's fine. But how many would be at the two-per-engine level of the 22 and so forth? Or if you can speak off the top of your head now, that'd be great.
I can do, you know, I can't, as I recall, we were the only department that had only two per engine. That was our minimum staffing. Every other department had at least three. We have a spreadsheet built out, I could send that spreadsheet.
So if you find later, and I appreciate that now, that we're the only one out of the 22, if you find later that that's not accurate, you could email us.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, yeah. There might have been just one, but as I recall, you know, if there was another one, there was only one other one. Everybody else was at two. Again, mind you, I looked at cities, and some of those cities were covered by fire districts that covered multiple cities, like Eugene Springfield is a good example. Eugene Springfield has a fire district that covers both cities, so it's one department that covers two cities. Another example is Twelton Valley. Twelton Valley covers five or six different cities, but it's one fire district. So again, sometimes it's hard to do that parsing, but I'll take a good example is Roseburg. Roseburg is a really good example. They are a smaller population base than we are. They have three fire stations, staffed with three fire engines, and on all three fire engines, what they say on their city side is that they are staffed by three personnel on each of their fire stations.
Okay. So just as you're, from your experience as a firefighter, which I assume everybody on council knows that you have a lot of years. So whether or not it's multiple cities that one fire company or one fire district, whether one fire department serves multiple cities or not, the question, you know, in my mind is, okay, so it really doesn't affect if an engine shows up with only two firefighters on it, it really doesn't matter what the funding of that is, it really doesn't matter what the structure of that city's fire department is. I guess the point is, regardless of who it is or where it is, two-per-engine is a lot more difficult to deal with for the firemen than three or four or whatever. And that's, I guess, that would be accurate, regardless, right? Regardless of how many cities are being covered.
Yes, there's been several studies done on work efficiency versus four-engine company, three-person engine company, two-person engine company. All the jobs need to be done. So it's, you just have fewer people to do it. Now, what happens here is to augment that two personnel on an engine company, another engine sometimes has to go to help supplement the workload that needs to take place. Again, the fire chief can speak much more eloquently to this than I can, but my point that I'm bringing across is that you're absolutely right. Obviously, the more personnel you have on an engine, the more efficient that engine's going to be, and also makes availability. So let's say you need three people at a scene, you've got three people on an engine company, pretty simple, one engine company can solve that. Again, I'm thinking like maybe a cardiac arrest where you've got to have so many things going on, you need so many people. Well, in this city, if you need three people there, you're going to have to get two engines there unless you have it upstaffed for the day. Again, the fire chief can speak much clearer to that, but in general, you're absolutely right. The work studies have shown more people is much more efficient.
Thank you. Joel and then Eric, or sorry, Joel and then Indra?
This might be a question better for the subsequent speakers, but on your proposal, do you have a dollar figure associated with it?
I don't. We were going with the figures we were given at the presentation last year.
Okay, thank you. Just a heads up so that we know what that is. That's an important question. The next question I had was, are, it's my understanding that you have a rating for the city based upon their fire services that the insurance companies pay attention to. And for example, the rating in the rural areas now is, because of the fire danger, there's several houses or properties that cannot get fire insurance. What is our rating and how would your proposal affect that if? Um, what is our rating and, and how would your proposal affect that if, if at all?
I'm going to let that go to the fire chief, but I will tell you this, that we have a very good rating, one that's a very rarity, as a fire chief and a fire department in the city should be very proud of that. And we're doing that despite the fact that we have the staff levels that we do. Uh, and so I think that's an amazing accomplishment, and I think the fire chief and the fire department should be given kudos for that.
Uh, Indra?
Uh, yes, you mentioned potentially lowering the reserve percentage. Were you able to determine if we did that to, I think you mentioned twenty-five percent? How mu, how much staffing that would cover?
I won't have to leave that up to, to budget here, I just know the, the percentage numbers. Uh, obviously, the, the finance director would be very able to handle that question, not me.
Thank you.
Uh, Kathleen and then Rob.
Um, so you mentioned that you had some requests or that you were open to requests from the fire chief and the police chief about researching. Have you done any research projects and, and where?
Oh, we just got started, so yeah, we're sort of still getting our feet on the ground. Uh, but, uh, right now, we haven't. But, uh, that was part of this presentation, was also let you know that that, that capability is out there. As of right now, we haven't been given that task, and that's why I'm sort of asking you that if you have that task, we'd love to bring it back to the committee and get working on it.
Rob?
Yeah, do, do the fact that this workshop had been rescheduled a couple of times. I'm just wondering that if the vice chair, who would probably have been here if, had we had the conversation earlier, if he has anything to add to this, if Jay, if Jay's on the phone?
Yeah, Jay's on the phone.
I'd like, does he have anything to add?
I don't know if he's on the phone.
He's on, he's online.
Okay, he's online, so. Yeah, Jay was supposed to be here also, but because of the rescheduling, he was unable to make it.
So he's not able to comment or, oh, good.
We're hearing something here.
Can't hear you just so far, I can hear a little mumble. Um, we can hear you, Jay, but it sounds like you're in a tunnel or a small box.
Maybe you is.
Really small box, sorry. Try, go, go, go ahead one more time.
Okay, um, yeah, sorry, I'm, I'm, um, it doesn't have great connection, so hopefully you can see this okay. But, um, we, we expect, um, the topic's hot, hopefully, maybe. Um, this is, we hear this, but, uh, we, uh, the top last year of the base, which, you know, some cases we discussed were approximately one month ago, nearly resolved, uh, per year. Um, and, um,
Hey, Jay, I, I'm sorry, man, I, uh, it, your connection is not really good enough. We can hear you, but it's really kind of blurry together, so it's, we're not understanding words. Um, so I don't know if this is actually going to work if we can't fix the connection on your side. Okay, sorry, Rob, we, I don't think we can get good connection on that. I was, I just couldn't understand half the words he was saying, so I apologize. Um, council, have any further questions? If not, thank you very much, and we'll proceed with the rest of the presentation.
Hey, good afternoon, mayor, council. I see that, Joel, you brought the reading glasses back, thank you. You can borrow them for, for the session, certainly. Or it can be an early Christmas present, there you go. Uh, I want to first off by committing counsel, and, and I'm very excited to be here today to talk about this. You are not short of controversial topics, whether it be water treatment plant funding, implementation, to the unhoused, to proper compensation for employees, to now public safety. I appreciate your spirit, and we appreciate the ability to have this discussion with you today, because this item is just as important as some of the other items that I just mentioned. The, uh, real purpose of this presentation is to provide a clear overview of the current public safety level of service in our police and fire departments, discuss our financial realities, we are facing, and outline potential funding options moving forward. Our goal is not to provide, our goal is not only provide clarity, but to begin a discussion about the level of public safety and council's desire for our community and our community's desire for public safety level of services, and collectively how we fund it. One thing that's clear is our direction. As what was mentioned earlier, public safety is one of your top priorities. We have clear direction through the strategic planning that you provided us to recognize that this is an important topic, and making sure that we have the proper level of services and funding associated with those services is a top priority. Okay. As you know, our public safety team continues to rise to the challenge of protecting our community. Yet the demands of our organization have grown significantly. We are experiencing increased calls of volume, rising complexity in services needs. We have mandatory callbacks that we're dealing with to try to sustain a level of service, and that's requiring additional overtime. These operational pressures are taking a toll on the physical and the mental health of our colleagues, and creating growing challenges in recruitment and retention when it comes to public safety. At this time, while the demands are increasing, our financial capacity is not. And you've seen that today, even in your discussion with trying to fund fifteen thousand dollars for COPA. Based on our current budget trajectory, I want to be transparent. We do not believe it is financially responsible to bring on additional staffing unless increased revenue is found or we reprioritize by reducing general fund expenditures in other departments. With that, I'm going to pause and bring forward Chief Hensman, and he's going to talk about police department. Then we'll, I'll bring in fire and finance, and then I'll come back and conclude with a call to action.
Aaron?
Yes?
Could you define mandatory callback for people who don't know what that is?
Oh, mandatory, yes. Uh, mandatory callback is when we have a bare minimum level of service, and we have people that have scheduled time off and vacation and et cetera. Well, if we are, fall below that mandatory call of service, as mentioned, we have two individuals, two firefighters to a station. If that fell to where, because someone was sick, um, or they maybe had a scheduled vacation, uh, and they could not be at work, and we only had one, we would have what we implement, a mandatory callback to where, in order to keep our citizens safe, both from a police and fire perspective, we have a bare minimum level of service. When that bare minimum level of service cannot be met with regular schedule, we have mandatory callback where we're like, I'm sorry, you're going to have to cut your vacation short, you need to come back. Um, or I'm sorry, I know you've worked the past three days, we're going to need you to come back in order for us to maintain proper level of service. We're at a point where we just are such a lean operation, and, and not only lean in public safety, but across the board, the city does an excellent job with the resources that we have, that the, maintaining the current level of service is creating mandatory callback issues. Thank you for that question. Chief? So, Mayor, Jay has called in on a different number. Do you want to try to see if, uh, we pause before we get Chief Henson up here and you hear from Jay?
Sorry, I'm going to ask Rob, because Rob was concerned about, would, did, would you want to try to hear him real quick?
Yeah, just in case he could have answered one of the questions that maybe Alan didn't, or he had something to add, I'd like to hear it, yeah.
Perfect, thank you. So I think that, same sentiment, if we can do a test run, I guess?
All right, let's test it.
So Jay, we're going to test you out another run, so go ahead and start speaking, if you would, please, sir? Okay, so I'm going to take that as a second try of no bust, and we'll have Chief Hensman continue on.
I had to check the time, I wasn't sure if we were, good afternoon or good morning, but good afternoon, everybody, and mayor and council, staff and community. And I appreciate my portion of the presentation today. And a lot of this is no surprise to anybody. And, um, but as I, as I roll into my presentation, I just want to make sure that for the, the men and women of the Grants Pass Police Department that may be watching this today or later, I thank you for your service. Uh, it goes without saying that twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And as a reminder, that police departments and fire departments have no strike clauses by law, because we have to be available to city staff, or should I say, to our community, uh, twenty-four seven. But as a reminder, and it's right behind me, this is our police department. And I say "our" because we talk about being on an island here in Grants Pass. I've talked about this for many, many years. And we'll talk a little bit about numbers, but I think we need to look through the numbers a bit and delve deeper, and recognizing that there are so many additional factors that go into maintaining a professional workforce, that if we overburden our team, they will go elsewhere. In fact, this weekend, I was having a conversation with a person, and we talked about different police departments in Southern Oregon that may not have a similar workload, but pay equitably, and why wouldn't somebody want to work in a potentially slower environment and have a better work-life balance than here in Grants Pass? Um, but what I will tell you is that we have such a dedicated team. I mean, incredibly dedicated, and, uh, the folks in GP just love being a part of the Grants Pass Police Department and the Grants Pass community, and give it a hundred percent every single day. Our workload in Grants Pass is very different. FBI stats will be coming out soon, I had a sneak peek at them, and, um, our numbers are pretty high, and we will continue to work through that. But as a reminder, we're a twenty-four seven operation, patrol, K-9, traffic, school resource, school marshals, community response team, investigations, our drug task force, accreditation, professional standards, SWAT. And I don't want to have to read through the entire scroll, but it goes far beyond what you just see in a patrol car zipping around town, call to call to call. I would imagine that if somebody might be on hold, uh, for a call for service, and they see a police officer drive by, it might be quite frustrating. But please understand that we have to prioritize the calls for service. And, uh, I did some research just over the weekend, I had to do some follow-up, and there's multiple calls for service that continue to hold in between shifts as well. And then as you think about just seeing the, the men and women in a uniform, you have to look further, and you have to look at our investigations and what they do on a regular basis. And they're managing this overwhelming caseload that nobody wants to talk about, because they're your sex offenses, they're your child offenses, they're your homicides, they're your major assaults, and so on and so forth. And it's so easy to forget them after that initial call is taken by a patrol officer. But then, as I go down my list and I see our SWAT team, for example, it's really difficult for an organization of our size to manage a SWAT team. We had a SWAT operation just the other day, it was part of a multi-jurisdictional case, and that brought in several people to work through this SWAT operation, and it was very successful, I will add. Uh, but you have to remember, our SWAT operators are also patrol officers, are also investigators. So when we do a major callback, somebody's got to work the road. So we have to make sure the road is staffed, and then we have to safely staff the operation so we can have a successful mission. And then as you go down the, the line there, we talk about our community service officers, who are just amazing, parking enforcement, and then our behind-the-scenes workers like property and evidence. And then our dispatch center, um, our dispatch folks do incredible work, and they're overwhelmed there. And I, as I'll go through my, my presentation, there's also good news in my, in my presentation. And I want to make sure that I, I start that off at this early phase. Uh, we are overwhelmed, and we do need more people. But there is good news out there as well for staffing. So as a reminder, and this council hasn't been a big part of it, maybe Councilor Pell and Riker and King have, have seen these numbers before, but in two thousand thirteen, and it's long before my time, we had an estimated population of about thirty-five thousand people, and we responded to just under forty-six thousand calls for service, and all types of different calls for service. We did a study back then, we hired ICMA, and they recommended back then that we had have sixty sworn police officers to manage the workload. So fast forward to two thousand twenty-three, and these numbers were previously reported, and an estimated population of thirty-nine thousand, so just under forty, and we responded to fifty-three, seven, two-two calls for service. So obviously, that number has, has gone up. In two thousand twenty-four, though, those numbers did go down, and I'll talk further about those numbers going down, and why I believe they've gone down to forty-seven thousand. So currently, as a reminder, we have fifty-seven police officers, and this is not to minimize the rest of the team. We have dispatch records, professional staff, there's a lot going on out there. But for this conversation to make sense and not get too bogged down, I'm going to try to keep it at the police officer level. This graph depicts the difficulty in hiring cops. It's really complicated, it's really hard, it's really, I, I don't even know what the answer is sometimes when I see this, as to why we cannot hire cops. My guess is it has a lot to do with police reform. My guess is it has a lot to do with work-life balance. My guess is it has a lot to do with, I'm sick and tired of getting into fights. My guess is it has a lot to do with, I don't want to be shot or get into shooting. The police department, when, when we talk about fifty thousand calls for, for service a year, that's running, that's a lot of work. So I wouldn't let a, a number like forty-seven thousand help you think that because there's a reduction in calls for service, that it's getting better. That's not the case. A lot of times, the complexity of the call increases. But also, too, I have been a big fan of never going to an online reporting platform. I think it's very important for our citizens to have a police officer show up at the doorstep so we can have some one-on-one contact, and we can resolve problems at that community level that way. But it's unfortunately next to impossible to do that. What you see behind you is a two-year police officer vacancy summary, and it shows you the difficulty in hiring people. Just because somebody doesn't make it through the police officer application process doesn't mean they're bad people. It just means that I can't take a risk on you for a lot of reasons. We give you a gun, and we give you a badge, and we actually go into people's houses when they're at their most vulnerable. So we have to make sure that we never bring those standards down to where we could have a mishap within our community. It won't happen on my watch. So as you can see, back in two thousand twenty-three, we only had one vacancy. But then, oh boy, does that number spike over the next couple of years. But I mentioned there's good news. That number, the most recent number of four vacancies, that's going to go down to three vacancies in about two weeks. When one of our former police officers is coming back, he left, he went to Arizona, but now he wants to come back home, so we welcomed him with open arms. Did we still background him again? Yes, absolutely, we did. So he's coming back. Then we have another lateral police officer from another bigger agency out of state coming to GP in probably a couple of weeks. This young man is finishing up the medical and the psych side of that. So we'll be down to two vacancies in just a couple of months. That's really good, but we still need to fill the rest. We do believe there's interest within the lateral police officer community, so we hope to see more engagement. But I have to be one hundred percent transparent and honest that the entry-level officer recruitment is not good. For example, last Wednesday, we did a recruitment, and only two people showed up to test. If you ask any police officer with more than ten years of service, they were probably fighting with hundred-plus people. When I started my career, um, and for example, when I worked in Las Vegas, there was thousands of people testing to be a police officer. Those numbers, those applicant pools just don't exist anymore. And then obviously, too, our county is smaller, and our city is smaller, um, so it's more difficult for us to find qualified people. So the overtime conversation continues to happen. The one thing I will share before I go into more about this slide is I think we do an incredible job managing our overtime at the police department. So I've not gone back to city manager or JC and said, hey, I need X amount of percent to fund our overtime gap. Now, in fairness, we do have salary savings. Now, in fairness, we do have salary savings from some of the openings, but the caption on this slide is in addition to existing vacancies, staffing is further impacted when police officers, they take time off. They've got to take time off. To make this easy to read, I decided to put this in days, but one day equals 12 hours and that's because our police officers work 12-hour shifts. So for example, if you look at 2023, that number, but my glasses on, I think it says 870 something. Yeah, 878. So that's 878 12-hour shifts that were taken off in 2023. That's average, that's normal. People have to take time off. We have a lot of cops, so they also have to take their time off as well. But also too, I wanted to put in there the leave of absence. So our folks are no different than you on the dais. If you need to get a surgery, you go out and get a surgery like a shoulder issue or something like that, but that takes them out of work for a while. The good news is we get a lot of them back on light duty, so I wanted to add that as well. So the blue in this case is actually a bonus to us. We want to bring our folks back to light duty and give them work to do so they can keep the cog spinning. In this case, they can answer citizen calls for service at the front desk and continue to do other jobs within the organization. So I hope that slide makes sense to you that that is a lot of personnel that are lost by illness, time off, administrative leaves, and things like that. Well, actually, I did want to go one more piece. If you notice the overtime line on top, I'm actually quite proud of that overtime line and I'm quite proud of our supervision because I'm very aware that this is not my money, this is citizen, this is taxpayer money. So we're going to do everything we can to minimize overtime. So some of you might think that that line probably should be above the paid time off line, but we're going to look at our resources from day to day, week to week, and we'll only bring back that extra staff on overtime if we feel it's absolutely necessary. So this is where the rubber meets the road, in my opinion. So the black columns show the total amount of calls for service per year since 2020. The blue line shows the reactive calls, so that's citizens calling about somebody trespassing, somebody robbing, somebody thieving, somebody fighting, somebody DOC, whatever the case may be, there's a variety of calls that we deal with under regular. And you don't see that much of a change. I feel with 2024's numbers being in the 30 to 800 category, I think what I, and this is anecdotal and this is just an opinion, I think our citizens are pretty tired of seeing the same thing over and over and over again. And where they may have normally called in, they may not be calling in as much. So that's what I think we're seeing out there. I think folks are getting a little jaded. Now, the green line is the proactive calls for service. We need that green line from 2024, in my opinion, to be above 25,000 that you see in 2020. I think a healthy number for the city of Grants Pass is somewhere around that 30 to 35,000 calls for service per year, proactive, that means citizens calling in. But we need to be, I'm sorry, I said this backwards. We need to be proactive every single day. We don't have the staffing to be proactive every single day. That's why we just maintain this reactionary workforce. I'm not minimizing anybody that doesn't pass a background check, but this just shows the reality of the background process for a police department. And we could talk all day about the whys, but I think it has to stay the same. And you can see that from 2023, the amount of disqualified police, lateral police officers and dispatchers, the number that's hired is okay. And then we have applicants withdraw and then are hired at other agencies. But that number is not a great number. I would much rather see that percentage a little bit higher. So as you can see, for the telecommunicators, so our 911 dispatchers, for 31 people we tried to hire, we only hired 11. It's not a great number. So this is my last slide and this slide is no different and I'll make some comments about years past. But when I got here in 2019, we had 58 cops, 19 dispatchers, eight records, 5.7 CSOs and a crime analyst. There were budget cuts along the way that I wasn't happy with. It's no secret, it's no surprise, but I do understand. But I do remember some of the cuts were not what I recommended. But here we are, we're back in 2025. And before I talk about these numbers, we have to ask ourselves, what's happened? Pandemic has happened. Ballot Measure 110 has happened. The United States Supreme Court has happened. Current lawsuits has happened. And there was no extra staff added. We just had to deal with it, manage it, and move forward. And that's what we did, we're chameleons. We take it every single day as it comes and I think we've just done amazing work over the years. Currently, we have 57 cops, 18 dispatchers, two call-takers. But remember those call-takers, they've been added because of the excise tax fees, so that was something that I'm really thrilled with our 911 board for doing. We have seven record specialists, four CSOs, a parking enforcement, and a half-time crime analyst. Now, I'm going to say moving forward into this multi-year approach, but before I talk about moving forward into a multi-yeared approach, I am very communicative with city manager and staff and I recognize that we change every single year. Yes, we want to have a long-term strategic plan and strategic goals, but if I think things are different year in and year out, I will speak up and I will tell you that, hey, we might need more or we might need less. I don't necessarily think we need to hire six cops today. I think we need to hire more cops, don't get me wrong, but I think we need to take a conservative, slow approach and reevaluate everything because we have to, we still have to hire 57 cops. Remember the last slide? We don't have all of our cops hired yet. And it takes a long time to get police officers trained and 911 dispatchers as well. It takes an awful long time. More good news, our folks that are in field training are doing fantastic. I'm very thrilled with them. So for community, if you see a cop car running around town with two police officers in it, one's in training, the other one's teaching, and it's a wonderful thing to see. So those guys are doing well. And then I head up to the academy, I think, in a couple of weeks for another graduation. So we're starting to get better and better and better. So my fingers are crossed that nobody else has any plans to leave that I don't know about. I do think we'll have one or two per year, that's normal. But also, on the positive front, dispatch, I have a dispatch applicant having a chief's interview with me and one of the captains on Wednesday. If we push her through into backgrounds and she passes, they will be fully staffed. I've not seen the dispatch center fully staffed, I think, ever since I've been here. So we're getting close. I don't want to forget about our records and our CSOs and everybody else because they're the ones that have to manage all the paperwork that comes in, all the standardization, all of the accreditation that we must live by. So there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes. So my moving forward is increase our police officer staffing to 62 full-time and then to rehire to lost positions. Yes, sir?
Sorry to interrupt you, Chief.
Not at all, sir.
You could go back to that slide.
Yes, sir.
So the 57 police, is that existing bodies? Is that positions that are authorized?
That's positions that are authorized. If you go back to this slide right here.
So it's minus the four?
Well, that four is going to go down to two. So we will have 55 full-time employees for police very soon and just have to fill two more spots.
Okay, then a follow-up on that. So then the 62 FTEs, that's only police officers, so it's talking about the 58 to 62?
Yes, that's a great question.
Actually, it would be 60 to 62. No, that's 58 to 62. Okay.
I have always felt the sweet spot for police is somewhere between 60 and 62. I feel the sweet spot right now, today, is 62. If that changes when we start to hire people, we'll reevaluate them, we'll tell you. We're not going to take extra staff just to have extra staff.
Sure.
But one of the fortunate things that happened to us is that crime analyst position that's gone down to a part-time crime analyst position, we hired an amazing human in that position, and I hope she's listening because she's fantastic. So the work we get from her at a .5 is just right, right now.
Thank you.
If you're finished, otherwise I can wait till you're done. So yeah, so I have a question for you. I didn't realize you were finished. Okay. You tried.
I thought so.
You almost got away. So you mentioned the difficulties in recruitment locally and I'm sure you could probably, I'm hoping you can speak to, what does recruitment nationally look like? Is this a national trend or is this just a Grants Pass trend?
I think it ebbs and flows, it depends. I think some cities are starting to see pretty robust hiring numbers. I recently read an article, I think about Seattle PD, they were able to hire, I want to say it was like 150 people. They had huge recruitment and marketing processes and they were able to get a lot of good people through. I don't know what that looks like as far as did they pass backgrounds, will they pass backgrounds and things like that. But mostly, agencies aren't back to where we used to be. I think the smaller agencies and the more distance between major cities have a more difficult time. But there also is the type of agency you have. Some people would much prefer to go to a sheriff's department where there's a different workload and then other people would prefer to go to a more of a sleepy community versus a community of our size. I mean, it's no surprise that we've been in the national news, it seems, every other day. And a lot of police officers in my state to themselves, why would I want to go to Grants Pass and make less money when I can go to the city of Portland and make twice that money? I think I heard Chief Day mention on the radio over the weekend that the average police officer in Portland makes $185,000 a year. So this is what we're competing against as well. And they're struggling up there too and they're struggling in a lot of cities, but other cities are not struggling. Medford PD, I think, are doing quite well and they're doing a fabulous job hiring people to fill those additional spots that they brought on. I think it's an additional maybe 10 folks. Their numbers have gone up to about 120-ish from 110, something like that. You're welcome.
Any further questions for Chief before we let him go? Kathleen and Victoria and then Indra.
So I heard you say that there was possibly hiring is down due to police reform. What did you mean by that?
Nobody's surprised, I think, when they recall what happened to George Floyd and the atrocity that happened with the officer there. He's now serving a life sentence. Actually, I don't even know what the sentence is, but I'm pretty sure it's a life sentence. That whole incident kicked off a qualified immunity incident, or conversation, should I say. Qualified immunity is when you can't be held liable for something that you did because of the job, so long as it's not egregious and it's reasonable. So there's lots of different requirements there. But our job is quite intense. We get into fights all the time, we get into pursuits all the time, we get sued often and the liability will immediately fall on that police officer. So sometimes police officers are saying to themselves, why would I want to go through that? Why would I want to be sued and have to go through litigation to defend myself when I'm just doing my job? So a lot of that has happened over the years, but I think the pendulum has shifted. I don't think folks are that concerned about qualified immunity or other issues that are happening throughout the United States.
Indra and then Victoria.
Yes, thank you. I think we all recognize the hard work that your officers do and appreciate that. So you mentioned the sweet spots for police. Dispatchers will soon be full, I believe you said.
Yes, ma'am.
What's for call-takers, records, CSOs, what would be the ideal for those positions? Are they good now?
Yeah, no. So thank you for asking that question. When we did budget cuts a while ago, the former council recommended cutting two police officers, a dispatcher, records, and I think a CSO. We did get one of the police officers back and we've been manipulating our staffing model to work with what we have. So do I think we will need to get back to eight records? I do. Do I think we'll need to get back up to 19 dispatchers with two call-takers? I think we might. And notice the change in my language because I want to evaluate what it looks like when we're fully staffed. Those two call-taker positions that you see, we have two amazing people that have filled their roles. The benefit to the city of Grants Pass is that one of those call-takers used to be a dispatcher. So she's dual-certified. So we actually get some big bang for our buck. So I want to take a look at the other professional positions within the organization before I commit to, we need one, we need one, we need one.
Victoria and then Rob.
Yes, thank, I'd like to thank you two and your staff. You serve this city so well and we appreciate it. I wanted to make sure that I was clear on the numbers. So right now, you will soon be up to 55.
Correct.
Is that, oh, okay. And then 62 is what you're recommending, so increase of seven officers.
Over a protracted period of time.
Over a protracted period of time. Oh, okay. Could you let us know roughly what that timeframe is?
I haven't gone through to the end of the story yet, but I do think the city manager has recommendations towards the end.
Okay, all right.
And we have discussed some of these recommendations and knowing that there is some sort of a commitment, a protracted commitment, would make my day.
I completely understand. And I also just wanted to say thank you for protecting overtime and for the people and also for the officers. So that was really a nice thing to see. So thank you.
Thank you.
I got Rob and then Indra.
Yeah, I think I'm going to try to clarify, put it this way, my memory, it may be a little different than yours, Chief. When you talked about the prior council recommending the cuts of two police officers, I remember quite clearly that actually it was you who recommended or said that you were very amenable to and even recommended not filling. There was a couple of unfilled positions and that was actually a good way to keep the budget down to where we needed to do it. And I believe that suggestion actually came from you. So we can, you know, let's just be clear.
I can share exactly what happened. The recommendation from me, because at the time, I was the director of public safety, so I oversaw police and fire, and my recommendation was to cut a firefighter and a cop. And that was overruled and the firefighter stayed and two cops were lost. That's what happened.
Okay, well, that's your memory of it, I guess. I'm pretty clear and I remember pretty clearly that there was a couple of positions that were unfilled and you said, actually, that would be a good way of, that you could deal with not filling those positions as a way of bringing the budget down.
Like I said in this presentation, every single year is reevaluated and that sounds just like me, that I would say something like, let's reevaluate, let's evaluate what we have, because there's only so much money in the kitty and there's only so many cops we can pay for. So I have to look at what our budget is and what's allocated and put our best foot forward to protect and serve the community.
And then Indra.
Okay, a major thing on my mind and I think on a lot of folks' mind is why we have all these repeat offenders. And I'm sure a lot of the work that your police officers are doing are rearresting the same people over and over because we read that in the paper. Can you speak to why that is happening, where the holdup is, and is there anything we can do to help with that or change that?
I think every city of our size and most cities across the United States have the same 5% doing the majority of the offending and then the rest of the community are doing their best to just live life. So the re-offending scenario is no different here than it is elsewhere. But I do think that Oregon brings upon itself some additional challenges. Ballot Measure 110 was a really bad idea in most of our opinions and that caused us a lot of problems. The unhoused. a lot of problems. The unhoused situation we're in right now, we're dealing with a lot of bad behavior, and that just hasn't changed for us over the years, Counselor. We went from one lawsuit to another, and now we're still managing people that have drug and alcohol and mental health issues, and they will continue to have behavior problems and re-offend. The court system and the overall opinion from our legislature, that is not for me to give you my opinion, although I do think it has become lax over the years, and there is more of a push for less people to be in jail and incarceration.
So locally, is there anything we can do to help with keeping them incarcerated or, or longer, or so they're not back out recommitting crimes again? Is that?
Counselor, that's going to continue to happen. It just is. I think people that are offense-oriented are going to keep doing it. The accountability piece, we have different matrices that you're only allowed to hold people in a jail for X amount of time, and then sentencing is on the judicial system. That's not, that's not my bailiwick. Could we use more staffing at the jail? Sure. But I think the overall way to change how things are happening in Grants Pass is what we've been doing for years, consistent and steady enforcement. We're going to need more bodies to have a greater impact on that consistent and steady enforcement model that we've done for years. That's what I think. And I don't want to place blame on somebody else, but we've needed new, we've needed more cops for years. If I get some sort of a commitment that integrates more police officers over the years, we will start to see a greater impact. Because of all the reasons we talked about earlier, I don't have a traffic team anymore that I can staff. We're getting close to that, but folks drive up and down Sixth and Seventh Street like it's a, you know, it's a racing event, and we're just not out there to get them. We're just not. And a lot of people are frustrated by that in the community. So we need to be able to fill the gaps we have, reintegrate the traffic team. We need to upgrade our community response team. We need to get our patrol staffing up to at least eight. Our detectives, on the other hand, they're dying back there. They only have, I think it's seven plus a sergeant, so they, they, they're dealing with major incidents. And then one of the things that we all, I do too as well when I say this, that we kind of forget about, is for every major crime, fast forward a year and a half or two years, now you got to trial prep to be successful in the courtroom. And then you're just reliving that case again. So there's just, there's so many different facets to this. But I appreciate that, that ask, Counselor.
Yeah, so, so are you saying that by having more enforcement and enforcing more of the laws, most of the people will not recommit that, and that that small fraction of 5%, we're just going to forget about that because there's nothing we can do about?
No, I'm definitely not saying that. We're still going to have, and we've had issues in Grants Pass as long as Grants Pass has been around. That's not going to change. Are we going to minimize people's comfort level in committing crimes? Yes, we are. So that's why I brought this slide back up. If you look at the green from 2020, those 25,000 calls, they're proactive calls. And then you look at 2024, that number has dipped to 14,000. That number, in my opinion, needs to be far above 25,000 and into the 30,000 category. We should be seeing about 60,000-plus calls for service a year, and I am confident that the criminal element in Grants Pass will think twice. As another example, we have a robust drug task force team. The price of methamphetamine and fentanyl in our city tends to be a little higher, and it ebbs and flows and it increases because of the enforcement that they do behind the scenes. There's so much work going on with drug enforcement that supply and demand has a, reacts to that. So if there's, if there's not a lot of supply, the cost is going to be high.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate all your time, and I guess it kind of hits back home as if the community wants to do their part, they need to report.
Yeah, we, we talk about this all the time. If you see something, you have to say something.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you.
We're going to move on in the presentation, and it looks like Fire Chief will take over.
Good afternoon. Counsel, thank you. Staff, thank you. If you guys need a quick break, let me know. If not, I'm ready to go.
All right, we're strapped in. Go for it.
Awesome. Well, thank you for being here. As you guys know, I'm the Fire Chief for Grants Pass Fire Rescue, and it has been an honor and a blessing to serve alongside these professionals. As we go through this, I want to talk about just an overview of our organization to start off and to really share with everything that they do. I find that the community has, sometimes they think we just have firefighters. So I like to highlight that in the beginning and share our organizational structure. Now, we are, yes, responding to fires. We are also doing EMS, which is a big part of what we do here, especially with the advent of AMR and the 1006 medic zeros we had last year and 2024. That is, our guys are responding from the stations, handling the medical services in our community well before AMR gets there a lot. We do technical rescue, confined space, rope rescue, fire inspections with only a one deputy chief, fire marshal, and fire inspector. We also share the load for SWAT medics. We have our guys that are, that were deployed recently, as Chief Hensman said, alongside them, sharing the load with two SWAT medics. Fire and life safety education, careers program. We do child car seat safety as well, and CPR anytime. We have other programs that we're working through with fire code enforcement. We work alongside with our staff, community development as well, and fire and life safety inspections. Now, I want to make note that we have 27 line firefighters. We have 32 overall FTEs, but that includes our battalion chiefs, our incident commanders. So we have nine firefighters. Where our minimum staffing level, though, a very important thing to remember here, is seven FTEs, seven firefighters per day. Now, we talked about this ICMA study previously, the Community Risk Assessment Standard of Cover Study. We have paid for that for years in advance. 2014, 2016, and 2018 had a critical, GPFR needs to explore staffing options and/or deployment options that would increase staffing levels during the busiest periods. They put that in as a critical study. You guys have heard this before. I know you've heard this in the past. They recommended 12 FTE. I'm not asking for that today. We are talking about a measured approach that City Manager Cubic and our Finance Director will also be talking about in the future stuff if we come to this conclusion. Now, in the past, you guys have heard NFPA 1710. I can talk to you about NFPA 1710 and that recommendation and what this is based on. However, while that is extremely important, we are at a different, we're at a crossroads here. We're at a different staffing level need here. We have been running at bare minimum staffing for a long time, and with that, the other factors, the factors that we calculate off of have changed. And those factors, as we've gone through all of this, with the NFPA 1710, you guys have heard in the past. I got the privilege of seeing the old presentation that talked to you about the NFPA 1710 and having that effective response force, which requires 15 people to show up at a fire to make it safe for our citizens as we respond and for our firefighters within the first eight minutes 90% of the time. We do not have that. Our minimum staffing is seven. We supplement some of that with rural metro if they have the staffing that day, key word "if." Now, I don't want to talk, but I don't want to beat that horse because, in my opinion, it's been beaten to death. But the new things that have changed, Oregon paid family leave. You heard about that? The House Bill 2005, 2019, the benefits began. Then in 2023, you'll see some of my charts where there's direct correlation with increase in overtime, paid time off. But there is good news there. Our firefighters are staying longer. With the work of this council, with the work of the council and the staff and City Manager Cubic beforehand and the previous negotiations, pay has gone up and some retention has occurred because of it, which has been a big deal. And they worked hard to get that. They got that right before I got here as well, so I got to give them credit. Now, going into the details, as you can see behind me, in 2023, you can see our overtime. Now, this chart, I think, really summarizes it for us. You have your overtime hours in red, your budget OT costs will stay yellow, and your total cost of OT. Now, 2023, I'd like to mention, that is when your Oregon paid family leave took effect. Also, as you'll see with, as I go to explain this in more detail, you'll see that there's been some other changes with our staffing because our battalion chiefs also moved into the union. They petitioned, and now they're a part of the union. They were separate from the union prior to this. Now, as I go through this, I want to talk about the average OT hours for, so 2023, our average, if you split across, was 255 hours extra. That's an extra month work per firefighter. In 2024, 357. And then in last year's, if you split the average out, over a little over 430 hours per person, working extra year just to meet our minimum staffing. And this has been a trending, as you can see, per the data, has been increasing over the years. Now, to come, to explain this issue a little bit more, when I got here, I got here in September 23rd last year, honored, again, privileged and blessed to be with these professionals that are working, they're answering the call. We're having to force hire. And when I got here in October, I ran the numbers right away, I was only here, and we were almost halfway through the overtime budget already by the end of October of last year, just to me. We had some staffing challenges. With that said, they're doing an excellent job with this, but I can, I can tell you that all of that work and everything that they're doing, we're getting burnout, especially when you have neighboring communities that are hiring right now that have four firefighters per engine, and they have the ability to have time off. Our staffing model, as minimum staffing of seven, only allows me to have one person off per shift out of the nine total FTEs. That being said, we already met this. We're struggling to meet that. We required an MOU last year, a memorandum of understanding, when the battalions joined the union, to allow a firefighter to be off? This is paid time off. This isn't unscheduled sick time. That complicates it. So I want to make sure that's clear, to allow a firefighter to be off and one battalion chief to be off, because there's not enough time in the year, 365 days, to honor their required paid time off, their accruals. So we're struggling, we're going to be struggling to meet that, especially since the good news side of it is we have some more people staying longer, which is good. So as you guys know, the longer they stay, the benefit of a time off increases some. So doing the standard calculation that we had in the past and the, based off of all of available information we have with the current CBA and the trends from going back from 2023, in order to meet this, my recommendation in a phased approach to come to where our minimum staffing still stays the same. Now, that means that our minimum staffing is at seven, so I'm not looking for an increase in overtime. What I am talking about is getting those extra bodies to per shift extra, which would allow there to be a lot more days in the year that we would have three firefighters per engine. Or in those times when there's scheduled paid time off and a sick call out, because, you know, there's life, they have families. Our families, our firefighters, our, their families are growing, which is a really great sign. It's a health, it shows the health of an organization because they're feeling comfortable enough to grow their families as well. But those times off where they have to take care of their families as well, we'll have that extra body there. So this is not an increase in our minimum staffing. This is just to maintain status quo. So we're maintaining the line, even though there will be an increase with FTE. Now, going over this, we talked about overtime earlier. Alan spoke about this a little bit, and I wrote down some of your questions, Counselor King and Counselor Pell, and I'll get to those as well. But talking about this, there's a cost associated to this, like everything else, and working with the X team, and we've been able to bring this out, and I wanted to talk about the whole cost. Now, it's not the bottom line cost of the firefighter at the first day that we were discussing, when it's the bare minimum first day cost. The cost that we were, we discussed about is someone that's about three or four years in, and we got, that's where I gathered these numbers from. The overtime you saw on a previous of $778,000, that was last year's overtime cost. With a very, very conservative savings of 20%, I project it to be higher, you would save approximately $289,000 a year with the hiring of these FTEs. Now, this is depending on how we would do this in a phased approach that will be discussed later, if this is something that you guys want, working for the staffing levels. But this is something that can, you can see the total net cost would not be $1 million, as we discussed. But I wanted to bring this to light and talk about the burnout with all of our guys, because this would adjust the 430 hours on average that they have to work just to maintain our minimum. With that, last year, I had to, which they have been enduring the last three years, per historical knowledge from them as well, we get close to the end. The last three to four months, we are required to have, on average, 18 to 20 hours of training a month, required to maintain certifications, really more when you include EMS and everything, but that can be the bare minimum. With that requirement, that requires some overtime in order for them to attend classes. The last three to four months a year, we're having to kill all non-necessary overtime. We're having to put it on hold in order to do the best we can with the taxpayer dollars and stay with as close as we can to budget, just to maintain minimum staffing. With that, that means a greater workload once July 1st comes, because now we have to make up those CEUs. We have to make up those training and those hours. So with adding the extra FTEs and being more people on, and then having that extra time where they would be able to schedule their time off and schedule that work-life balance, that would make things a lot easier as well. And the public safety, which really comes down to risk tolerance. What we're willing to have is a public safety and what we're willing to risk, because in the past, we have been, we have been very blessed, but there's a time and a place like with the recent fires and the Devil's Slide fires where one day, something unfortunately is going to happen. And in our preparation and our ability to respond with our staffing is what is going to bring us to that level to maintain that. Now, I want to talk about the class two. Counselor King, you spoke about the public protection classification. I'm glad that you brought that up. You asked that to Alan. That is something that our professionals in our city and City Manager Cubic and with the X team have brought to bear. They have put in the hours, they have put in the time, but with that, there is a savings component. If you, if the personnel is added and we are able to get those three-man engines, we can go to a Class One easily. I can call up for a review, and we will be able to go to a Class One. There's water review, our water hydrant system. April is just named recently. He's been doing a fantastic job. That, we get full points for that already. So our hydrant system and our gallons per minute on our hydrants, we're able to achieve that already. But the personnel is where we lack. Now, from a Class Two, this is an average, to a Class One, you get about an eight and a half percent savings in your insurance costs commercially, so our businesses would benefit, and per $100,000 assessed from a Class Two to a Class One, you get about a $430 savings on average, this is an average, national average, per $100,000 assessed, private residentially in your insurance costs. So those are national averages that you can look at as well. So hopefully that answered your question with the PPC rating. I think that with the professionals we have, with their abilities, their willingness to work, as you know, they've been meeting this gap just to meet our minimum staffing. I think we can get there to Class One. That's one of our goals, and I really do believe we can do that. And with your help, we can do that. Hopefully that answers your question. Yes, sir.
So that was per $100,000?
Yes, sir.
So if I had a $400,000 house, I would save $1,400 in fire insurance?
That's what they're, that is what the average, what the research would say.
Average would be. And that includes businesses, part of businesses.
The businesses are about eight and a half percent they save over the overall.
Eight and a half percent.
Commercially is what the, what the data suggests, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That can be different. I want everybody to say, I didn't get eight and a half percent, I only got 6%. But that is the data overall, is it eight and a half percent? Yes, sir. So just to recap all of this data and bringing this information, attacking this from a different angle, from NFPA 17 again, 10 again, you guys have heard that over and over again. I'm talking to you about the health of our organization, the time off, the accruals, the burnout. We have been at this level for a long time. So we're at that tipping point. We've spent over $1.7 million in overtime since 2023, 27,000 hours. The average overtime for each firefighter this year, last year, was over 400 hours. I don't, it's not to increase service, but just to hold the line. This isn't asking you for an increase, actually. This is just to hold the line based off of what our, our needs are today. We will have days where we have more than two firefighters on a truck. And yes, in a perfect world, I would like to make that, but this is just a phased look at what we can do to safely and continue on to maintain the public safety that we've gotten here with today. That's why we're requesting six additional firefighter positions. The cost was at 1.06. Estimated overtime savings is 289,000. The net impact, though, the more resilient team, uninterrupted service for our community. And if you guys have any questions or anything right now, please let me know. I'm ready for them, and I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Indra?
Yes, so those figures you just went over, is that just?
Yes, so those figures you just went over, is that just a net cost for wages or does that include the benefits also?
That is a great question. So that's actually all incorporated. So that's your PERS, that's your 30% that we pay, give or take a percent or two, the 30% you have to pay for PERS, your health insurance, everything. So that's an all-inclusive cost.
Victoria?
I just would like you just to make it really clear for me to go back over the insurance savings.
The insurance savings, so from the ISO?
Yes.
So that's not, now that is, I'm not talking about that in our budget. So that is not something that I'm saying that we're gonna, that JC is gonna be able to, I'm talking the overall data for ISO. So the overall data for ISO for your commercial savings is when you go up in one class protection, so from a class two to a class one, is about eight and a half percent overall in a year. Now, the residential private that they average can be about $430 per $100,000 assessed.
Thank you.
No problem.
Joel?
Do you know what the assessed value of property is within the city limits?
The last, I would have to look that up, sir.
Does anybody know that here? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
275 to 300?
275 million?
B.
Oh, total.
Yeah.
JC was saying average.
Oh, average, well, total for all the, all the, total assessment. I can't hear you without your mic, I'm sorry.
I don't know the relevance of the question, but I can look up the assessed value and send that information to all the council if you want.
Yeah. Well, the thing I was getting at was it would save so much money across the city based upon the total evaluation and what they pay for fire insurance and what that dollar amount would be. It would be in the hands of the private sector rather than in the city.
It's hard to say a hard, fast rule, right? Because the calculation he's talking about is individualized to the property owner. So I can give you the number, but I don't know if that's going to be exactly what the community would save dollar amount.
Sure, it would be on the average. Thank you.
And I want to give you, make sure that's emphasized, it would be an average. So, there's other factors.
Further questions? Eric?
Chief, thank you for the presentation. Really brought a lot of things to light. Wanted to ask for clarity on the overtime. I believe I've got it correct, to where six additional firefighters would get rid of 75% approximately of the overtime that we're currently going through?
So I did, no, sir, I did not say 75%, but what I did say, I, that would be in the perfect world. If we went to 12, yeah, then I could say something like that, but six would, being very conservative, would cut overtime about 20%. Realistically, I think I could, I could show you with the numbers and the data more, but I want to make sure that I give you a realistic number here. And I can say, which I have examples in with Portland posted as well, 20% savings. Austin, about 20% savings their first year. Fort Lauderdale, I went across the nation and looked and posted what they were saving within their first year of just adding these to maintain the minimum staffing levels.
So just to clarify for everybody, the six additional personnel is not going to fix the overtime altogether. It's going to minimize it.
Yes, sir. So it won't, adding FTE never fixed the overtime altogether. I mean, unless you, you would have to add a lot more. So I was just giving you an overall net cost, not, so the FTE by itself, a little over a million dollars. But the savings you would get from the overtime would be around the $700,000 mark, would be the total cost, based off of last year's number, sir.
Thank you.
Rick?
Thank you, Chief. Chief Hensman talked about the difficulty of finding candidates and having them look at Grants Pass and so forth. If the council moves forward with these positions, how difficult is it to find people and how soon would you see they could be on board?
While I appreciate Chief Hensman and the work that our police officers do here, they do a fantastic job. The, I am going to be a little biased with the fire department and say that we, we firefighters, we love, we love, you know, playing it and we would have no problem filling those positions. We would have, that would be something that if we sent out to hire, those positions would be, would be filled.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Chief? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing further questions, we'll pass it on to JC, he'll take over.
So to answer the previous question, assessed value is about 3.8 billion? Billion. You have to divide that by 1,000, though, because per thousand. Yep, and then also every percent, so I just do it by 1% and divide that by 100 again. You're looking at $38,000 savings to the community.
Sorry, I forgot the mic. Eight, eight and a half percent for commercial, about average, this is an average, $430 per $100,000 assessed for residential, private. The, it's for, I have a $100,000, that's really small.
Joel, your mic. Thank you.
So if everybody, the average was 8%, you'd look at community-wide about 310,000 as well, calculate? So maybe before I start, is there a break needed? Just double checking. I have two kind of separate presentations within here, so we could probably go through one and then reassess if we need another break. So I'm here, I guess, to rain on everybody's parade. It seems like it always comes to this part where it sounds like a great idea and I want to tell the fine men and women that work for the organization that I fully support hiring more people. It's just financially, it doesn't seem to pencil out when you pull these numbers together. So when you look at the fiscal year 26 budget, what you're talking about in the police and fire budgets is people. And people are the most expensive things at the city, because what you ultimately have to have to do police and fire is a person to do those services. And so when you look at those budgets, 73% of their budget makes up people. Now, if you ask both the chiefs, the other 27% is because they have the people and they have equipment. We have buildings, we have facilities, we have other things that go along with those people. So they would maybe make the argument that 100% of their cost is due to staffing people. So how do we fund that $35.9 million in the fiscal year 26 budget? There's about $15.9 million in permanent property taxes, 7.3 for the local option levy, 3.9 million of the public safety utility fee and 3.9 million in the other revenue. And other revenues are going to be like our 911 agency contract, the school district contract, transfers in from lodging taxes, fines from district court, grants and forfeiture money and other things like marijuana tax. The other number to look at here is 5.7 million dollars of general support. That is the unrestricted funds that go to support both of these departments above and beyond their dedicated revenue sources. Now, what does that look graphically? You can kind of see the bar charts are our revenues and the orange are the expenses of police and fire. And as it, as you can see, as of 2016, we've kind of just outpaced the current revenue. You can see in that 21 to 22 area, that was when we had budget reductions in service. And so you can see that there was some uncertainty there and I'll get into some numbers as well as to show kind of what that looks like. Shh, go ahead and ask it maybe and then I'll see if I answered it in a little bit. Okay. Yeah, no problem. So what we've talked about, there has been a systematic imbalance as far as our budgeted revenues versus our budgeted expenditures. And so on the left, the blue line is what we budgeted revenues and over time, the orange is what we've budgeted in expenditures. Now, as you can see, we plan on spending and using that fund balance year in and year out the last few years. And that gap keeps getting bigger and bigger because it's more expensive to provide the services that we currently provide. And so part of the argument is that maybe we don't spend some of that money and we have extra savings. Well, that's what this one, this graph is going to talk about. So your red is your actual operating expenditures, the blue is what we actually pulled in for revenues that year. And that orange bar is that argument of, of where we budgeted expenditures. And you can see there is a gap between the orange and red bar that we do what's best for the community. We try and save as much as possible and not spend money just to spend money. But what you can also see on this, on this chart is the revenues, even though those savings are there, we seem to be breaking even almost. Now visually, that's what that looks like. Here's what that looks like numerically. And so if you remove some of our restricted funds for tourism promotion and building safety, which we've had previously in the general fund, which we've recently moved out of, as well as contingencies and transfers, you get an ending restricted fund balance of the previous year. And you could see that middle column of the unrestricted beginning fund balance, that's also another name for where we ended the previous year. And you could see that percentage off to the right of how you calculate that beginning fund balance to the budgeted expenditures. So if you're looking forward, even though, yes, we potentially are making money, we are actually reducing that percentage because the costs are going up as such. And that is why on the dais, you have this giant piece of paper in front of you as well. So this is more or less a income statement from year to year. Your revenues are on the top portion, your expenditures are on the bottom. I have some notes here. This also removes the restricted funds of building and tourism promotion. Because again, you can't spend this money on police officers anyways, so we're going to remove those funds. Column of 2025, I just want to make a note that these are unaudited to date. It is incomplete. We do have per policy a 60-day revenue accrual period. So there will be some revenues that we receive here in the month of August that will financially be put back into 2025. And so the bottom line of the 30 may not stay as a negative. We may see a flip, but I'm guessing, based on previous year's revenues, we may break even about again. And so numerically at the bottom there, the net change in fund balance, you can see the last few years, we're pretty close to breaking even. There is, you know, some blips as far as data, the 21 and 22 years as far as increases in fund balance. But those were years that we were also going through budget cuts and uncertainty, uncertainties where we were holding vacancies. The other thing I want to point out too is the police chief so highlighted his vacancies in his police officers. If you look at 23 and 24 and 25 of what we were talking about, if he fully employs those people that he had vacant, we also will be, would be having more expenses than revenues and ergo not necessarily making money. So I just wanted to point out that is potentially what we're looking at financially is even when we have savings, whether it's in budget or in vacancies in certain departments in the general fund, which I believe as of June 30th, 2025, we had 10 general fund vacancies. We're still not making money. And that's part of that budgetary imbalance where we have budgeted more expenditures than revenues. And I'm going to take a pause right here because that's a lot to take in and maybe make sure that everybody's on the same page and ask me some questions just regarding that financial construct.
Questions for JC, I got Rick?
Thank you, JC. So, I realize when it comes to total expenses, we look at one figure. And when we're looking at actual budget and the fire chief is indicating an overtime that, that money has been spent, does that, do we have budgeted overtime in our annual budget? Or is that always over and above?
So each year, every department, we actually take a look at budget appropriated overtime. But what he's seeing probably is a trend in those, those leaves that he's talking about that is above and beyond a normal year. And so we try and be respectful to the budget as far as not necessarily give everybody an above and beyond amount. But what we think could potentially be the case, and again, I think we've just missed the last couple of years because I don't think we fully understood what paid leave Oregon and some of these other leaves would be doing to us.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I got Joel, Kathleen and Rob.
So the city has done a really good job of managing the budget in the past and this, this is actually a question for you, Aaron. You know, rather than spending the leftover dollars at the end, you encourage and, and give a target to each of the department heads to actually come in below the budgeted level. And, and it's an informal policy, but what exactly is that policy?
We don't really, in years past, we were consistent in being able to return approximately, we averaged about 6% of what was budgeted. But that is, that is a, it was never a policy, it was never a direction. It was just a sort of an average of what we saw coming in.
It was good management. Yeah, and you, and you did a good job. So when I, when I look at that historical savings of 6%, and I look at public safety, funding, financial status, current service level of the fiscal year 26 budget comes in at $35.9 million. That's the actual budget not, and does not reflect that 5% savings, correct? Okay, so then when I look at the public safety funding financial status with the general fund budgeted revenues versus expenditures, does that reflect that 5% savings or is that actual, what's that?
So it's going to look forward a year, so you're using the beginning fund balance, which is an actual amount to a projected budgeted fund balance. So at this point of the year, as we're closing, we look forward as to the budget that we are going to have to pay for. Because again, you don't, you can't count that we're going to save year in and year out. And I think my cohorts on the dais here would say that that savings is getting harder and harder to manage.
Sure, I understand that. But that does reflect 100% of what was budgeted rather than what historically has come in at 95?
That is correct.
Which is, which is, we just need to know. We need to know.
Per budget, I don't budget 94% of people.
Okay. Then on the public safety funding financial status, where you have fiscal year and you have the percentage of fund balances to expenditures. And that, if I understand that correctly, that's what's available percentage of fund balance to expenditures. At the end of the fiscal year, how much do you have left for carryover until you get new revenue? Is that what that is?
That is correct. Actually, I'm glad you asked that question. So if the imbalance this year, we ended around that 38% that you can see on that last line.
Right.
We actually are drawn down budgetarily 13%. And we barely made it over the general fund fund balance policy at 25.54%. And so we budget to hit that policy.
So the question I had then on that was there's, what percentage year, time-wise, is it between the end of the fiscal year and the time when revenue starts coming in?
General fund is going to be potentially in your November, December timeframe.
November, December.
And that's going to be your large chunk, but you've added the public safety utility fee, which is coming in monthly, which helps offset that, that need potentially to be at that 30% that we were a couple of years ago in the general fund of being four months out. So council found it recently to be able to lower that to 25%.
And that, that water bill add-on helped that. So we're talking about a four-month period, which would be 33% then, correct? It would be four out of 12.
Which I suspect that is why the previous policy stated it at a 30 to 40% minimum.
Right. And we ended up last year at 38.16.
That is correct. But again, reminding you that that 38%, because of where we budgetarily sit as the imbalance, we budgeted 13% more to spend than bring, bring in.
Sure. And does that number reflect the? And does that number reflect the 5% savings or not?
That's not going to because budget policy does not calculate savings.
So if we're, if your department heads with your good financial policy, that theoretically could be even 5% higher. 5%?
No, because that's the actual. I would say you'd probably go the other way in the argument of if we're drawing down fund balance about 3% a year, next year, I will have to make a budget cut to keep you above 25% if there's a 13% discrepancies.
And then the long-term trends I see there are up, down, up, down, up, down. There was one trend between 24 and 25. Up trend in 22, 23. I'm not sure what causes that, but.
Yeah, that was the budget cuts that we did.
Okay.
So there's two rounds. One around the 2021 cycle and the other one around the 2023. And that's why you could see those, those numbers kind of bump back up.
Okay. I had one more question and you're answering them. Great. So I need to get you some lemon drops. So on the, on the sheet you handed out for general fund, right here, in 2025 or actually in all of them, you have total current expenditures. Is that the budgeted expenditures or is that the actual?
That is the actual.
Okay, thank you.
I got Joel, Kathleen and Rob.
I just want to follow up, Joel. That's, the actuals here, again, showing it that way is because it removes that budgetary savings argument and you can see that that is the net.
Yeah, and that's why I asked the question. Thank you.
Go ahead, Kathleen.
So I'm just kind of curious, on the mayor council expenditures, it looks like there was expenditures up until 2023 and then no more.
It's a great question. So the mayor and council used to be paid for out of the general fund. A couple of years ago, we decided that, to move that out of the general fund and put it into admin services because mayor and council actually serves the entirety of the city and not just general fund. So in some way, you kind of do build back the general fund for your services, but now all of the utilities pay for the mayor and council budget.
All right, I got Rob.
So I think, you know, my question may have been addressed in your, addressing Joel's questions. But, you know, when I look at the, the very bottom line, we have unrestricted beginning fund balance, bottom right, 15, 15 million. So if that had been, if that had been, you know, truly the 25% that we were, that basically is our new policy, that number would be 9 million and change. Is that right?
Yeah, I think it's closer to 10, but yeah, you're right.
9, 9, 1. So essentially, you know, we've made a new policy that we've reduced, you know, the minimum, the minimum reserve that we need by approximately 10%. We've reduced that down and yet that bottom line number keeps growing, even though we've, our policy is that it should be shrinking, but it keeps growing. And, you know, the difference, I guess, you know, had that been 25%, which is what our policy is, it'd be, actually, my numbers are 9,196,000. Basically, we'd have $6 million difference. There's a $6 million difference there. So if I understood correctly what you're saying to Joel, the $6 million is what we need for the three months that, that tax revenue is not coming in? Or what, what's the explanation for why we are essentially keep, keep creating policy to reduce that bottom right number, which would give us free up $6 million potentially to spend wherever? And yet instead, that number keeps growing despite our policy changing that says it should be shrinking?
So that's this graph right here?
So this is showing you that in 2026, your expenditures are far above your revenues. See if I can put my pointer on there. That's right here. So if these were equal, yes, that argument holds weight that we should be holding closer to that 9, 10 million. But since we are budgeted to overspend to keep the current service level, we have to have a higher beginning fund balance because the current revenues that we generate year in and year out aren't enough to support the services. So we are using technically one-time monies in fund balance to perpetuate our current service level.
So I understand the words you just said. It just doesn't seem, when you said we are perpetually overspending, then how is it that that bottom line number is perpetually growing? In other words, the beginning fund balance continues to grow, but you say we're perpetually overspending? Like both things can't really be true.
They are. So mathematically, yes, it is going up and that's the middle column that you're mentioning. But the column to the left, the percentage that you compare that to, that is also growing by millions of dollars. And so ergo, the dollar that you save today is worth less tomorrow. So right now, and how I would explain it is that you make $100 a week and your budgeted expenditures are 120.
But then at the end of the month, at the end of the month, according to this, we have, we have money left over that continues to grow every year. So this is like an Isle of Lucy episode. It's like, you've got some splaining to do.
It's very complicated because again, it's hard to rationalize that you're, we've set ourselves up to spend our, or use our savings account as collateral to what we think we may buy. We're walking into a grocery store with $100 in our pocket, but the grocery list is $120. And like the vacancies, there just may not be chicken at the store to buy and that is helping keep us within that $100 that we have in our pocket.
I'm going to have to think it over. I, I really don't understand how we can continue to overspend and yet continue to have a larger ending fund balance every year. It just doesn't, you know, I, I don't get it.
So another way maybe to explain this, the police chief has five vacancies. If he were to pay for those at the beginning of the year, all the way through the year, you're looking at anywhere between 150,000 to 175,000 per individual. And so as you, if we were to fill those seats, that number wouldn't be going up, we'd be going down.
Yeah, I, I totally understand that. But I guess real world reality is every year for the last, you know, however many years you've shown here, the reality is, is that we never fill all the seats, right? So.
Yeah, and I would say that's a dangerous way to play that. So what happens when we do fill all the seats? That means that you're going to expense a lot faster than what you've planned for. That goes back to my comment about budgeting for 94% of people, which we try and budget everybody at 100% and ensure that when we have the opportunity to fully employ, we can show that budgetarily.
Thank you.
Joel and then Rick.
Could you go back to the previous slide, J.C.? So these are budgeted expenditures versus operating revenues and expenditures. Do you have a graph that shows budgeted expenditures? The operating revenues are different than the budgeted revenues, right? Could we give an estimate?
Yeah, that's this, that's this one.
Okay, so that's the budgeted revenues then?
Correct.
And, and that expenditures, is that the actual expenditures or is that the budgeted expenditures?
So both of these are budget. And then when you flip to this slide, the red is actual and the blue is actual and the orange is budget.
It's kind of confusing because this says the, the expenditures are budgeted and the operating revenues and expenditures are what actually came in.
Correct. And so we should hope that the red bar chart should be lower than the orange bar chart. And then the blue bar, bar chart is just showing you comparatively of where we sit as far as actual revenues in comparison to the actual expenditures.
So, so that one is a little more relevant if I understand what you just told me, and I'm not sure I did. But so the actual expenditures versus the actual revenue, show me that graph.
That's right there. That's the red and the blue.
Now that says, that says budgeted expenditures. It doesn't say actual.
So that's the orange is budgeted.
But our budgeted expenditures do not equal our actual expenditures.
Well, but, but if you take it, forget, there, there's three columns, there's three columns in each one of those councils. You've got red on the left, then you've got an orange in the middle and then you've got blue. Pretend the orange is just a separator. What it's showing you is that the operating expenditures and, and the operating and the budget, and the budget expenditures and operating revenues.
Okay, I see that. There's three columns, they're not just the two.
So if you compare the red and the blue, the two outside ones, the key piece here, I think to look at is not just one year alone, but look at the cumulative 2016 to 2024. 2016, our operating revenues were much higher than operating expenditures. And if you continue to look, those operating expenditures are growing, 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 growing. They have yet to really surpass our operating revenues, but they've gotten to a point where they're almost equal. That's the problem with, with what J.C. is saying is the overspending. It is catching up with us and it is going to take over unless we make some changes, whether it be new revenues or different, different ways of looking at providing our services in the general fund.
Okay, I understand that and I appreciate that and thank you for that. Now budgeted expenditures in that one is kind of, I mean, it's, it's useful information, but it's kind of superfluous to what actually came in versus what actually went out.
Not really. So when you're talking about your five, 6% savings. Yeah, we're saving $3 million budgetarily, but I can show you via numbers that we're breaking even, even though we're saying we have saved 300 or $3 million in expenses.
But, but I can also say with truth that we're spending less than we're taking in.
Very slightly, yes. That's it right now.
But, but that is decreasing over time. Okay, yeah. So we're spending less than what we're taking in. Okay, thank you.
Luckily.
Okay, I got Rick, Eric and Victoria. Rick?
So J.C., just carrying that conversation a little bit further, when I was in the military, if you had a budget and you didn't spend your entire budget, you could carry that over to the next year, but we don't have that luxury or that ability, do we, with our accounting system?
I wouldn't necessarily recommend that for the general fund. I think we have some large departments that return some large savings and I think you would exacerbate certain services that would decline. Specifically, we would carry over like police's savings, which they have the largest budget, which they have turned back maybe $2 million. But if you rolled that to them just individually, you're going to have to potentially reduce services in smaller departments like planning, economic development, parks and recreation. And so we kind of use it as a, a team effort of everybody puts their savings back into the same pot and then starts the next year over.
Okay, thank you.
I got Eric and then Victoria.
And let me just finish one other idea from that too. And that's because public safety is already taking about $5.7 million from the middle of the shareable funds. And that's why we don't necessarily allocate those savings directly back to them.
Just wanted to point out, if we can go back to that graph, the last one, yep. Nothing on there really shows the unfunded mandates or the legislative requirements coming from Oregon. Our expenses have increased dramatically. We heard from the police chief and the fire chief, the various things that, that, that we're undergoing as a city. So this is, this is a, this is an issue that we are having to deal with in terms of expenses. So it's more of a comment, not a question. I just wanted to point that out to the, to everybody here. And I think it's, I think it's outrageous, but you, the city is doing a great job with, with the expenses that were dealt with, the, the cards were dealt with. We have a lot of expenses that have to be paid for and we're, we're going to start seeing that here shortly. So, thank you.
I got Victoria and then Joel.
When you give us, when we get down to, I think it's a slide forward, yes, I think, okay, when we get down to the bottom line for 2025, has this number, and I, I realize this isn't representative of exactly what I am asking, but have, have you budgeted in, does this number reflect the possible increases for staffing with police and fire?
No, this doesn't. So this is a look backwards and forwards as to where we currently sit. Now, I will remind you that in the fiscal year 26 budget, we did not increase any FTE and so financially, we sit at that 25% at the same staffing level without the increase of recommended FTE, which is going to be part of the call to action here later of potentially if you're, you're wanting to increase FTE, we're going to need to have additional revenues to offset that.
Thank you.
All right, Joel?
I hope this is my last question, J.C. Go back to where funding for public safety comes from. Right there. Okay, so we got two other decisions coming up that's going to require some money. And some of it's going to come from the same pot. It won't be permanent property tax. It won't be the local option levy. It won't be the public safety utility fee. I suppose it could be other revenue or general support. Those other two things are, how do we pay for, if we have any increase in social services and, and wages and justified increase in wages? So if, when I make, when we make a decision based on whether we increase the amount going to law enforcement and, and fire, it affects those other decisions where funding comes from the same pot in terms of carryover and acting responsibly, fiscally responsible. So I would guess that the social services have yet to be determined where that money's coming from, but it could come from general support. Whether it comes from other revenue or not, I don't know. And then the, the salary increase would come from general support also, is that correct?
It's already currently, the salary increase, and I think you're talking about non-bargaining, it's already currently reflected in this.
It's already what?
It's already reflected in the fiscal year 26 budget. What gets implemented though, could be different than what was budgeted for.
Okay, so it was budgeted for the planned amount that was initially presented to us?
That is correct. So staff felt it was better suited to put the larger of the amounts to give council and the budget committee the most flexibility moving forward.
Oh, that's important information and thank you for that. And we'll move forward as best as we can.
So I think that to answer your first part of your comment question, I think you're talking about opportunity costs. So there are other issues in front of the council right now. Homelessness, public safety funding, and maybe some others that there's going to have to be a decision as to where that funding comes from and what the council wants to do.
Sure.
And so you can make a choice to do all of them. In the event that that is the case, we're probably going to have to have a budget policy discussion and what we lower that to. And that maybe changes the options of bonding that we can take for the water treatment plant because then we would reduce the budget or the general fund's fund balance policy, which that's just part of the scoring of a credit rating for a city.
Understand completely. And we don't have to do that. We could possibly do it in other ways. So I, so I appreciate what you're saying.
Rob?
So J.C., when you talk about the amount for the, the non-bargaining potential raises that's already been budgeted, what is that figure? How much has been budgeted?
It's embedded in each of the departments. So general fund speaking, I think it's less than half of the number that was presented to council of the 1.2 million. Because not all of that's general fund.
Okay, so you're saying that what's been budgeted for the potential raises for the non-bargaining group is in the $600,000 range?
I think it's less than that, closer to five, but.
Does that, so that includes all, all benefits and PERS and everything else?
That is correct. And we also do that for the firefighters association, IFF. They haven't settled their negotiation, so we have a budgeted estimate in there for that number as well.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, and I guess you've got a second portion to this?
I do.
Thank you, go ahead. Thank you, go ahead.
We have more fun to have. Uh, do you want me to keep going?
I don't see any of the further questions, so yeah, go right ahead, please, sir.
All right, so we're going to get into the individualized funding options. And I think I'm going to pause after every one of them, because we have five new counselors and so it may be more easier to manage if we just take bites out of the elephant here and look at one option at a time. Um, and then that'll allow us for time at the end to kind of put it all together as well. So, uh, in having done this recently, uh, the unfortunate, uh, nature of this situation is there's no easy options for council. I just want to point that out. Uh, all of the options before you have some kind of economic implication. Uh, this process is going to take some time and deliberation. So the last time we implemented the public safety utility fee, that took us about two years. Um, and so you could potentially look at that kind of a timeline, depending on what options you're pursuing and how you're going to pursue them. And so we also need to be aware that some of these, uh, previous councils didn't necessarily pursue all the way. And so we may need to require some other consultant work to gather and interpret some of the data, because that's not necessarily going to be our Bailey Week or, or Baileywick or another city's Baileywick, because some of these aren't actually implemented at a city of our size. And so it'd be hard for us to potentially judge and come up with the correct organizational, either municipal code or, uh, F T E to staff to incorporate this into our everyday service level. And then again, public messaging is going to be extremely important throughout this, this process. I do want to point out, uh, you are not the first to have this conversation. Uh, there, this has been a topic of conversation, um, in previous councils and you can see there's lots of work that was done and then proposed in front of the community. And you can see that there are some items that, uh, were proposed that, uh, eventually failed. Um, and then pointing out in the 2021, we have a $2 million, uh, budget reduction and then 2023, another 1.9 million dollar budget reduction as well. I got a list of funding options to go through. Uh, I'm not going to read them all, because we're going to go through them one by one, but I want to point out, I put these, uh, tachometers onto each one of the slides. Uh, it's to hopefully, um, give you an idea potentially of what kind of funding you may be looking at. And I kind of put like a low, medium and high. And then the implementation from a, an easy to a hard. And I give that with a caveat that, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's exactly true to what this gauge says on the slide, uh, because it can vary depending on what you implement. So depending on the individualization, so if you choose 1% versus 5%, that changes the amount of funding and ergo would change that tachometer. Um, and then based on our jurisdiction and organizational structure, it can vary, uh, as far as how hard this is to implement for us. So like a utility fee right now would be way easier for us to implement, um, than potentially a, a service district at this point. So I just wanted to, to point that out. So of these funding options, I have these kind of orange texts, which is the revenue impact, and that is the who is affected, who pays for the service and who uses the service. And I want you guys to keep in mind as we go through this, there's a nexus to the service potentially of who is paying for it versus who is using, um, the service. And how we came to the public safety utility fee and the methodology was, we found that in the data, the commercial to residential split was about a 50/50 for calls of service. That more closely matched and married our transportation methodology, uh, and that's what we ultimately chose and went down to, uh, implement the public safety utility fee. Again, matching and marrying, marrying the calls for service to the actual methodology and type of how we would charge this out. So to start off, the first one, a utility slash service fee, uh, across the state, this is the most popular. Uh, in 2019, uh, there were 26% of fees served by public safety in the state. Um, there's, uh, other areas that people, uh, charge utility fees and service fees, um, to incorporate. And again, we chose just recently in June of 2024 to implement our own public safety utility fee. This is not voter required. Uh, the revenue impact is obviously our residents and business owners. So part of the pros, uh, we could pass those, those who already use city services and the illogical assumption that they use public safety. And why this was also, uh, considered was it can include those that are property tax exempt. Similar staffing and resources are already in place as far as our utility billing department. And there is a case of jurisdiction lowering their fee, uh, when expenditures came down. Uh, some of the cons to this service is it is another fee on the utility bill. Um, and what we are seeing as far as implementation is an increased delinquency rate, um, due to those increases. So council, uh, implemented a public safety utility fee on June 1st of 2024. Uh, for fiscal year 26, the estimated revenues is 3.9. And I just kind of briefly put up, there's a rate structure as where it currently sits. Uh, the most confusing part is the commercial side. Uh, and everybody always asks, what kind of commercial business does that make me? And that all depends. And so that's why I have the next slide. Uh, everybody potentially starts out as a commercial A. And then depending on the business type, uh, it actually moves along the scale to B, C, D and so on and so forth. So I just wanted to point that out, that the structure there is dependent on the size of the business as well as, uh, the business type. And at that point, I'm going to take a pause for any utility fee, um, discussion.
Uh, any questions on the utility fee? I got Victoria.
So I remember you speaking to us before about the increased delinquencies in the utility, uh, uh, bills. Have those been, have they progressively gotten larger or have they, do you have any idea if they evened out over time? And also, is it mostly for, uh, people in the area of elderly and condominium and single family or is it business as well?
Uh, so I'll answer your second question first. Uh, we do not manage the program. St. Vincent de Paul, uh, a local nonprofit manages the program. And they, we have some rules as to you can only use it once a year and some structure like that, but they manage who gets it. To answer your first question, uh, monetarily, we are seeing that more people dollar value-wise are utilizing that third-party service, uh, so much so that we increased the budget in fiscal year 25 from 50,000 to I think about 72,000. And for the first time, we ran out of money.
Oh, and so, so it is increasing, obviously. So the next question was, uh, oh, which you might have answered by saying you can't really tell. Do you know, uh, how those delinquencies are, are happening? Is it like 50/50 business and personal and, uh, residential? Or is it mostly residential? I'm just trying to get some sense of who this utility fee increases hurting the most, I guess is the bottom line for my question.
That's probably a fair question. Uh, I don't have, I don't have the exact answer for you. I would assume that the lower income senior kind of residential area is probably the most affected.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I got Joel and then Rick and then Kathleen. Joel?
So I look at the funding options in the utility service fee and, um, the fiscal year estimated revenue is 3.9 million. What was it for fiscal year 2025, do you know?
I think we budgeted conservatively at about 3.2 million dollars.
3.2?
And then we readjusted that number once we actually saw what the utility was bringing in.
So is it also true that, uh, that increases by inflation?
Yes, just like all the other utilities, uh, it does have the CPI attached to it per the municipal.
And, and is it true that that also increases by any new construction, um, that we have?
Yes, that would, so you're saying like if a new business were to come up or a new single-family residential, yes, you would then be increasing those revenues.
So 3.2 is for 2025 estimate, we, um, and that was conservative. Uh, we've increased it to 3.9 million. Would you say that's conservative also, given those other two factors or?
No, I'd say it's probably actually closer to market at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Rick and then Kathleen?
So J C, if we go back to the big spreadsheet you had here, 830,000 deficit, um, the fire chief indicated that if he is able to receive or the money spent for overtime and use that for new hires, he could save, he could reduce that amount. I realize it's overspending. Reduce it by 200, say quarter of a million. Could that then come off of the 830 and reduce it to, just ballparking, to 500,000?
No.
Because?
Because he's going to have to spend a million dollars first to reduce it to 150,000-ish.
But we already have that in the budget?
No.
We don't?
And so you'd need to increase his, his, uh, F T E approval by six, give him an additional million dollars. And then hopefully that will reduce as a net 770-ish thousand increase.
Okay, and then do we have a ballpark if the police chief gets all the positions he would like to see?
And that's part of the question of where the target is funding-wise for you guys. So it's great to say that you want to hire five cops and six, uh, firefighters, but when you string them all together as far as the total cost, you're looking at a couple million dollars, um, plus.
So a couple million, could that be just ballparking 2 million?
You'd probably, off the top of my head, it'd be probably close to that.
Okay, and then if I, you've indicated in here the, the cost, um, maybe that comes later, of the $12 raising another million dollars. That used to be, uh, $1 would generate 3 million in revenue of?
No, I'm glad I wrote this down. It's about $3.50 equates to a million dollars.
Added on to utility tax.
For a single, for a single-family residential. It'll ripple out larger for the commercial.
Okay, that's pretty heavy. Thank you.
Kathleen?
Uh, Joel, got my question answered. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen. Any further questions for J C in regards to this topic? Seeing none, I'll let you proceed. Oh, sorry, Rob, go right ahead, sir.
So, um, on the 3.9 million that the utility fee, um, generates, since that's spread out over nonprofits, it's not just, um, property owners, but all nonprofits. This, this is, I'm sorry, I don't have this in my head. It should be pretty easy to figure out, but, so if we did away with the utility fee, how much would we have to increase the public safety levy to generate an extra 3.9 million?
Uh, I'm coming to that, but I think it's a, a 25 cents per million.
Any further questions? I'll let you proceed.
So the next slide is the local option levy, uh, which kind of is a good question to Daisy Jane into. So local option tax levy is a special levy, subject to many conditions. It is often referred to as gap levy, because it can fill the gap between measure 50 tax limit and measure five tax limit. A local option levy is in addition to measure 50 taxes, but measure 50 taxes plus any local option, uh, taxes cannot exceed the measure five tax limit. And again, I just want to highlight the, the quote unquote gap funding. Uh, we've had the local option levy for several years, uh, at the same $1.79. And so we've institutionalized it. It's not necessarily gap funding. It is a requirement to keep the service level that we have right now. So this is a voter required. Uh, the revenue impact is going to be property owners. Uh, so as a pro, it can be an extension of the permanent rate. Uh, there is already a system in place for billing. Uh, some of the cons, uh, it's temporary in practice, as it can have a maximum of five years. It's subject to future property tax compression first. It is subject to voter approval and there is a level of service stability and community and organizational impact from a local option levy. And depending on the conversation and where we go, and the levy is supposed to be, um, good through fiscal year 29, um, what we've seen in the past is as you get closer to a levy year, there is some uncertain organizational, um, temperament as far as is it going to pass? Is it going to pass? And I think, uh, we've always done well, um, as far as the voters turning out and approving the levy. Uh, it's just something to consider, though, as these conversations keep going on, that there is a little level of uncertainty about people and their jobs, uh, when we're talking about the levy and, and/or passing it. In fiscal year 26, we estimate the revenues to be about 7.3 million dollars. And you can kind of see the levy rate history. We've been the same $1.79 since 2010. We've tried to increase it 10 cents twice and it has been met with no's. Not very large margin, it's pretty close, but it still hasn't been supported by the, the community. And then there's that same 25 cents is approximately a million dollars. At that point, I'll take a pause right here, too, and see if there's any levy questions.
Council, have any questions for J C on the levy? Seeing none? I'll let you continue.
The next is going to be a service district. So a drawn boundary of properties that comes together to support a service via property taxes. And I believe you've seen the sheriff, sheriff's department, uh, recently form one. There's various examples throughout the state. Um, even here, we have like our library district. Um, other places, uh, 911 districts are being popular to consolidate services and/or, regionally, uh, just makes more sense. Service districts are voter required. The revenue impact, again, is property owners. Uh, for a pro, it does establish a permanent property tax rate for the district. Uh, some of the cons is you're garnering voter support for a new district, uh, and then limited by the same property tax growth. When we talk about property tax growth, typically the assessed value can only go up 3%. And in high periods of inflation like we just had, where we had over eight and over four and a half, uh, percent, uh, property tax increases don't keep up with those kinds of inflationary costs. So per the Josephine County table 6A for the fiscal year 24, 25, uh, here is the most common, uh, code area, uh, throughout the city. Uh, the other code areas, you're going to swap out the Grants Pass School District, uh, with the Three Rivers School District. And all of those add up to 13.3757 per thousand as far as property tax, uh, charged for those, that code area, which is, this is the largest one in the city. And I want to just say that there's a few others that get charged out slightly different. So this isn't everybody in the city. And at that point, I will take questions regarding the service districts. So not all residents are the same based on where they live in the city. So some have a different school district that they, uh, report to. And so that changes that calculation all the way to the right.
Joel, your mic.
It's the individual property and where it's located.
Uh, questions? I got Kathleen and Indra, and please make sure and remember, turn your mic on, please.
So I was curious, um, is a levy, would a levy incorporate county and city or would it just be city?
I would think you'd want to make sure that it's just city. Um, but a service district, potentially you could be larger than just the city. So for a levy, I would say it'd be more city-based, but with a service district, you have the option of how you implement that potentially and potentially could partner with the county to provide certain services. Does that make sense?
Yes, sort of. I was wondering what that would all incorporate, though. So the levy would be on, on what kind of services?
Good question. So currently, we have public safety, uh, which is both police, fire and 911, and that's for the city of Grants Pass and the services it provides the city of Grants Pass. A service district, technically speaking, you could create a new service district that is the entirety of Josephine County, like for fire per se. And then the city potentially would manage both the city's fire services and the counties as well.
Got Indra?
Are we seeing an increase the last three years, say to this year? Or I guess it would be last year twenty-four. Increase in delinquencies of property tax bills being paid? Or instead of the, the whole amount being paid in November, are we seeing more spread out through the months?
That is an excellent question, and the answer to that question is yes. I think in our quarter three financial report, we actually show a, a chart that was, we normally collect about ninety-five percent in any given year for property tax. As of March, we're normally in the ninety-three, ninety-four percent range. This year, we're at ninety. And so I think you could definitely say that less people are potentially either paying all upfront and or just going delinquent. Now, the, the system is in place that it gets actually leaned against that property. And so at some point, the city will receive its funds when the property sells.
So do we have, we have more properties than in foreclosure as well?
I can't say that for certain, but data wise, we are receiving less revenues, which you could, would, would lead me to believe that we have some people who are behind.
Any further questions? All right, seeing none, let you proceed.
Food and beverage tax. This would potentially be applied to all food and beverages sold by restaurants located within the jurisdiction to the public. There are some potential nuances in, between prepared and grocery. Alcohol is excluded. OLCC owns the rights to taxing that. And then there can be exclusions that are tailored depending on how you want to write that code. And that's where I talked previously about depending on the level of detail that you want to implement. You could have it either count when it is sold or not sold on, on hospital grounds or sold in vending machines or public and private schools. Like there's, there's an infinite amount of variables potentially that we would need to go through when designing a food and beverage tax. These are not voter required. The revenue impact is gonna be consumers. So you're gonna get both residents with inside the community as well as the outsiders. Some of the pros would be consumers pay for services, including outsiders. And other jurisdictions do have models to leverage from. As an example, the city of Ashland has a food and beverage tax. Some of the cons is it is subject to economic volatility. And currently at the city of Grants Pass, we do not have the staffing system and collection and enforcement of something like this. And so we would need to either look at increasing staffing FTE and or have, having a contractor do that administration for us. And I know I talked about the economic impact, and that's why I put this slide in here. This is the city of Ashland's financial report specifically on their own food and beverage tax revenue. And you can kind of see per the total, the second to last column, that economic volatility in that COVID period of twenty-twenty. And it really did take them five years to potentially come back to a similar revenue source that they were getting in twenty-nineteen. So I just wanted to point that out. And with that, I will take any food and beverage taxes. Questions that you may have?
Questions on food and beverage tax? Indra?
Would that include trucks, food trucks and vendors at events?
I believe when we designed it, it was food trucks that were standing as operating, not food trucks potentially that were at special events, like a one day kind of thing.
Rick? Oh, sorry. Indra, were you finished? I'm sorry.
I just thought, so that would be discretionary. We could make decisions on that piece.
And that goes with designing your code.
Go ahead, Rick.
JC, what is, do you remember what the actual tax amount is now? I know they keep raising it in Ashland.
The percentage?
Yes.
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Off the top of my head, I want to say it's five percent, but don't quote me on that.
Any further questions in regards to food and beverage tax? So I have a, oh, sorry, go ahead, Rick.
So for us, for them generating, that's thirty-one million dollars a year?
No, 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 that's the cumulative. They're about three point two million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Victoria?
You might not know this, but, and it's just anecdotal from my memory. But I think that the Ashland restaurants really suffered after the implementation of this food and beverage tax. Can you speak to that? And I understand if you can.
I can't speak to what the city of Ashland's impact was. I was residing in another part of the state at that point.
Before you go forward, I just kind of got an overall question in regards to your, your meters. You, you put a meter up there for implementation. Do we have any idea on like what a timeframe would be for implementation of any of these? I mean, you could be broad brushstrokes in your answer too. I'm just trying to get an idea. Like is it gonna take us three months? Is it gonna take us three years to do something, one of these?
So generically speaking, with some of these that we do not have, you're potentially looking somewhere in the eighteen to twenty-four month zone. Because you get into this and you have the nuances of who gets charged what and when. And you have somebody who asks a question of circumstances, right? When does a food truck get charged? And you can define all of that in your code. Does it make it easier if you were to potentially leverage from the city of Ashland and almost replicate their code? Sure. And that would speed up that timeline. But if you're gonna go through and pick out the things that you want to change and be specific for the city of Grants Pass, that takes all these time, all this time in workshops and whatever to define.
So to be conservative, if you were to say the food and beverage tax could take you twenty-four months to implement it, and that would be actually realizing the revenue from it?
I would say that'd probably be pretty good because you'd want to do eighteen months in design development as well as giving the community six months to prepare for and make sure that everybody's on the same page as of January one or XYZ date, that everybody knows and understands what's supposed to be done as well as us having a system to collect the revenues. Unfortunately, there have been examples throughout the state of things that have been implemented and not the systems in place to actually collect those fees.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I guess it's a good idea to have, you know, if you're looking at the slope or the incline of the treadmill, how, how long are you gonna be on that treadmill too? Thank you.
And it varies, right?
Yeah. Further questions, Rob?
Just to address your question, Clint, I have no doubt that, you know, the, the speed of our, speed of government here in Grants Pass could, could be very slow in some areas. But the, the consultants or the, the company that actually put together and actually manages the food and beverage tax for Ashland said that that timeline would be about a quarter of what he just stated. Now, it could be that, you know, we could drag our feet and make it, you know, turn it into eighteen to twenty-four months. But the people that actually do manage that for Ashland and, and could set it up for us say that it's far, far less.
That's good. Yeah, and like I said, I was just trying to, you know, if you're looking at these different options, it's kind of a good idea to have the timeline that would, which would be to implementate one. So. Okay, any further questions? Nope, I'll give it back to you and let you go forward.
Okay. The next one is the sales tax. So this can be applied to retail sales and services. There are some federal guidelines out there for certain items such as your SNAP benefits that you cannot tax. Again, alcohol is excluded. And then you can exclude, or you can create exclusions and, and tailor them. Auction sales, sales of livestock, sales of planes, sales of non-residents of tangible property. I think we went as far last time to put certain caps on dollar amounts potentially. And so there's a bunch of different ways again to tailor this and to make it work for what you're looking to charge as far as the community, as far as a revenue source. This is not voter required. The revenue impact is gonna be consumers, so your residents and outsiders. So some of the pros here is consumers pay for the services, which includes your outsiders. It is a wider base of taxable items, so you basically take the food and beverage and then you add all of those other, all of those other goods that can be included as far as the sales tax. Again, some of the cons is similar to the food and beverage. You are subject to potential economic volatility. We don't currently have the staffing system, collection and enforcement. And then there is a timeline to implement. Why I put the timeline to implement here and having legal is I don't think this model exists in the state of Oregon. And so we would be the one who would be breaking through the glass for the rest of the state. And so this would take a little bit more time. Even when we went through that, we were looking at different codes. Do we use a state of Washington? Do we use a state of California as a base? And those state codes in themselves are hundreds of pages as to what qualifies. And so defining again, going through and doing all the work as to managing what the expectation is as far as what you're gonna tax and or do we create maybe or look at a regionality. So do we adopt California's codes as our own because we're closer in proximity? Or do we use Washington because we like them better and or it would potentially serve a city like Portland? That once we have it on the books, they could potentially leverage from our code and copy it that way too. And so there's different ways of, of looking at that and how that would play out. Just wanted to point that out as far as the consideration. And with that, I will take any questions for our sales tax.
Questions? We, Rob?
So JC, when you talk about leveraging from other places that have already done it, what I don't see on your list here is basically the, we'll say it, the big box sales tax that Portland has.
It's coming.
You know, is it coming? What'd you say? You're coming up to it?
It's a later slide. It's a different kind of tax.
Okay.
So I got a question for specifically on the sales tax and hopefully, any other questions first? Nope. Do you have any metrics on what that percentage would be?
So when we looked at this last time, approximately one percent is four point six million dollars.
Okay. Cool. Thank you. Any further questions in regards to sales tax option? Seeing none, I'll let you proceed. Thank you.
Payroll tax is the next one. So your contributions are based on wages. Employee and employer rates and structures can be different. You can put limitations on here and place a max. So such as the first hundred thousand of wages is only taxable and then anything above that is not. And so again, you can tailor this depending on how you want this to look. This is not voter required. The revenue impact here is actually your industry. So it's your employers and your employees. Some of the pros is employers, employees of local industry pay for the services. There is another city out there that has one and specifically has one for public safety, and that is Eugene, Oregon. They implemented in twenty-twenty-one. The potential of resources for, so your revenues would go up as cost of living adjustments for those outside industries increase. Again, cons, you are subject to economic volatility. Part of the question that always gets brought up is does this deter business to other local jurisdictions? And again, we don't have here at the city of Grants Pass the staffing system, collection and enforcement for those. Just as a, here you go. In the city of Eugene's financial report in twenty-twenty-four, this is their top ten employers. And so this is the industries that they are hitting. And we did interview the city of Eugene two years ago. And they worked really hard with their local chamber as they were going to implement this to communicate the need for public safety as well as communicating with these individual employers as to how that would impact them. Which ultimately, they said that they, they started early and they got that public buy-in. Now, what that looks for the city of Grants Pass is here are our top ten employers. And so this is potentially what you're looking at as far as implementing in the, the list of those businesses and entities. And with that, I'll take the payroll tax questions that you may have.
Any questions? Rick?
So on a payroll tax, does that come directly out of the business profit? Or does the employee pay it? Or how does that factor out?
Could be, yes. It could be either. So what I'm talking about is this could just be employee base if you wanted and not employer. And so employee base would almost be hitting the employee. If you make it employer base, you would be again, increasing the costs of taxes for an entity. And so increasing the, the bottom line of the costs that it takes to run an establishment. And I, I want to say they did like a sixty-forty split in the city of Eugene, but I could be wrong with that. Thank you.
Any further questions? Rob?
So you have a list of our top ten employers, but are the, would the employees or the nonprofits be taxed? Or this is a list of our top ten employers, but this isn't, is this necessarily a list of businesses that would be included in such a tax? In other words, are nonprofits also taxed?
No, this is just showing you this is the, the higher employers as far as quantity of people. And so yes, this would apply potentially unless you have put in another caveat that anybody under ten people working doesn't have to pay this. You could curb it that way. I would recommend that you keep it equal. And so whether it's one employee or, or the thousands of employees that somebody has.
So that, that really wasn't my question. So in Eugene, do nonprofits like Three Rivers Schools and Grants Pass and the city of Grants Pass, do they have to pay this tax as well?
I believe so.
Wow, that'd be very unusual.
Any further questions? Rick?
So the chart you have here shows we could have as much as almost nineteen percent in just for us as a city if they were taxed.
No, that's just, this is just a list of top ten people. So this ten, this list of ten makes up twenty percent of the, the employment in the city of Grants Pass. More, more so the county. I do need to clarify that I think some of this spills over into the county.
So do you have a conversion of? How, so if you needed five million dollars, you take the, how would you convert it into what that looks like per percent?
It's a good question. When we went through this last time, council didn't have the temperament for a payroll tax even to begin with. But we would need to do some, some research. I believe there is a, there's an economist of the state that we can pull data from and try and calculate what that may be. But again, that changes depending on the exclusions that you may also draw into the payroll tax.
In general, does it be quite substantial or quite miniscule?
I think if you consider that the city of Eugene brings in twenty-four point four million dollars with theirs, it can be pretty substantial.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Rob, you got another question?
Yeah, so I, I just actually gonna preface this just by quickly saying that this particular tax is probably the most distasteful to me personally. But you don't, for some reason on your list, while you've got other nonprofits and so forth, you don't have the city of Grants Pass on that list. You've got school districts and so forth. So basically, if it was paid by employees, it wouldn't be paid by employees of the city with the way you, the way you've done your list. Was there any particular reason why the city was?
We just don't include ourselves on this list. I mean, we could in the future. We're about two hundred and twenty-five-ish.
Well, that's larger than, than one of the businesses that you listed. So you, we should be included if you actually just went by the number of employees.
Everybody would be included potentially.
Right, but, but not, you don't have the city though on this list, I guess.
We might be missing other businesses and industries that we didn't get the data and statistics for too. So this isn't the, this is the only people being charged for this.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give you guys a, a relative between the city of Eugene and our city, what that looks like as far as their top ten employers.
Yeah, so to clarify, this is just a list of the top employees. This isn't a manufactured list on who you would actually implement this payroll tax to. Because the payroll tax would be initially across the board to all employees on whatever criteria we set forth.
That's correct. This is just the top ten that we have the data for.
No, but, but it's not. How many employees does the city have?
Two twenty-five-ish.
Pardon me?
Two twenty-five. So yes, we did not choose.
So the bottom of your list is one seventy-five. So, so it's not an accurate list. So so it's not an accurate list, is my point.
We just, we don't normally use the city on this in our annual comprehensive financial report.
JC, also that 175 is their current employment for Fire Mountain Gems, but they were 382 in position number eight. 10 stops at Fred Meyer. And so we would fall below Fred Meyer on that list and not be included in the current list in the top 10. We likely have not been in the top 10 ever, or we would have appeared.
In 2015.
In, or in 2024, we would be below the top 10 because 275 is number 10. We would be below that. The reason the 175 is on there is because in 2015, they were at position eight.
Thank you for clarifying.
Just to clarify, sorry.
Yep, nope, you're good. You caught it.
Any further questions on payroll tax option? See you none. JC, go ahead.
This brings us to the transactional income tax. So this can be an extension of business occupancy license and tax. This was actually one of the areas that somebody recommended us look into as far as an outside consultant. It is charged like a business income tax. The limitations can vary such as gross income, net income, or net of other federal and state deductions, so on and so forth. Are we potentially looking at large retailer focus? So what Council Powell brought up earlier is Portland does have the clean energy surcharge tax rate. And of large retailers, all businesses with a total sales of $1 billion or more and Portland sales of 500,000, they pay 1% surcharge on retail gross revenue within the city. And this surcharge is not a tax imposed directly on the purchaser. The retailer needs to come up with it as far as they itemize its costume businesses for the purchaser. And these amounts are still considered retail sales subject to the clean energy surcharge. This is not voter required. The impact here potentially, excuse me, is business. The pros is that the industry pays for services. This can be marginalized. So what Council Powell mentioned earlier is this can lean towards your larger box companies. Some of the cons here, you are subject again to economic volatility. Again, the question is, do you deter business to other local jurisdictions, especially large box companies? And then again, we do not have a staffing system, collection and enforcement. And I do want to bring forward this slide for the City of Portland's clean energy surcharge. And I want to recall what I previously talked about as the nexus to service. And so what Portland was aiming to do down in the bottom right-hand corner of this slide is they were trying to charge people that they felt that were creating a larger carbon emissions for their community. So basically, larger box stores were shipping more goods in. And so they wanted to help incentivize a another program of clean energy through this kind of tax. So again, they found the nexus as potentially hitting the big business in the City of Portland. And I just wanted to point that out as to why this was their focus. And that is the end of my transactional income tax. So you can take questions now, Mayor.
Joel? And then Rob?
Well, so the state of Oregon is already employed statewide. If if a business grosses over $500,000, a 1% tax, is that correct?
You're talking about the corporate activities tax? I'd have to look into it, but I believe, yes, there's a.
And so in most businesses, net versus gross would be, let's say it's 20%. And so if you have 1% tax on your gross, it equals the 5% tax on your net. And and the same thing would apply if we add to that. You could, it would be a 10% tax on your net, on your profit. And so it, the 1% sounds very innocuous? Is that the right word? But all of a sudden, in addition to federal tax and state tax and employment tax and other taxes, what's left over, you have another 10% that that is taxed. And that can become really burdensome. I know several businesses that are struggling with that. And it's why several businesses are moving to other states. Anyway, just a comment.
So I don't have an answer to your question, but I think there are articles and cases throughout the state of Oregon. Once they implemented that cat tax, there were industries that maybe weren't looked at. And specifically, the article that I'm recalling was a local pharmacy that was a mom and pop brand shop. And they were having to, I believe, close doors because their margins were so low and the costs of of medicine is so high to begin with that the 1% really did affect like you're talking about their business.
Rob?
So in the in the Portland model, and obviously anybody could do whatever they want, and you see, could do what they want. They're they're, I guess, directing funds towards whatever clean energy thing they think they've got to do. I mean, they could be called anything. And we could call it what, which is what it would probably be, is a public safety funding surcharge. It would have nothing to do with clean ener, whatever theirs is called, clean energy, right? So it could be called anything, right? And what we're talking about, or at least what I, what they did, was for businesses that were doing at least five, what, at least two, was it 2 million locally and 500 million nationally, right? So that's not mom and pop. That's not a mom and pop, it could be a mom and pop pharmacy. But but those limits could be anywhere to basically have it be targeted to big boxes. But I, it could also, I'm, it's my question, I guess, that could also be online retailers as well. I mean, they they they've got no local expenses and yet they use our roads. They use, you know, they they definitely cost us money to operate here because we got to have, you know, roads and we've got to have police to to monitor the roads and so forth for them to do their their, you know, their essentially tax-free, expense-free business in our town. So we we could, we could include online retailers as well, right?
Yeah, I think that is.
Amazon or whoever else.
Yeah, I think that goes with the sales tax as well. I think you could incorporate some of the online shopping that was done in Grants Pass.
For any business that does over whatever threshold we chose, you know, 500, 500 million nationally or whatever. And that basically excludes any of our local mom and pops. It actually gives our local mom and pops a little bit of a, an advantage, so to speak, while it would be taxing much bigger operations that are, you know, benefiting by being in Grants Pass, but.
Yeah, we'd have to look at the model, right? Because how many of those entities are in Grants Pass to begin with? So if you've shrunk the list to, let's say, 10, you're only collecting from 10 businesses rather than collecting from all of the all of the business community. So.
Amazon could be a giant number, you know?
Is that?
Amazon could be a giant number.
It could.
The amount of business Amazon does in Grants Pass. So there's a lot of possibility there. Yeah.
Any further questions? All right, see you none. Oh, go ahead, sorry, Andrew, go ahead. Sorry.
In your vast amount of research, is there any data on how, when these things, taxes are increased? Or payroll tax, whether it's income, I'm thinking payroll mostly. What percentage goes under the table? Is is that, is there an average or thoughts on that? Because I, it does happen, I know.
That's the whole point, it's under the table. Nobody knows.
So I, there's not an answer to your question that I can give. But I can give you an example of what the City of Eugene tries to do. So in their first year of implementation, they knew everybody wasn't going to get it right. And so they spent more time educating all of their business owners and reaching out and making sure that they knew how to do all of the things, which increased their receipts and that percentage. I think they started in the ballpark of 70. And then when I had talked to them a couple of years later, they were still in the 90%. So they still had some work to go. But they were making progress with getting compliance through their education efforts and not necessarily as a penalty system, but more as a an education-based way to looking at it.
And then I guess a comment and a question. So a lot of these, the the payroll hits both retail and service industry, but retail more. And then the the sales tax, of course, is retail. So it seems to be a disadvantage to retail stores over service industries. Are you seeing that? Do you see that as I do?
That is why you sit in that seat to make the hard decision, I think.
Not, there's nothing that's come up to make it kind of equal between service and sales.
I mean, if history will show anything, no matter what you choose, you'll get people that come into this room to tell you it's a bad idea.
Any further questions? All right. Table's back to you.
The next is franchise fees. There's no voter requirement. Your revenue impact is franchisees. And so franchisees, in the case of the city, are are Pacific Power, electric, natural gas, those kinds of services that are allowed to operate in the city and we get a percentage of their revenues. The pros for changing this is it already has an established customer base. They already have some of their staffing and resources in place as well as us as a city. Some of the cons is we would need to update municipal code, the ordinance and contract amendments between those those entities. We would also need to be equitable and charge water and sewers the same percentages. So we would need to increase our own costs. There is a limited level of revenue. Increasing everything to 7% is potentially an additional $1 million. But I'm going to go to the next slide and I'll tell you why this never kind of gets any temperament. Here's the rates as a comparison throughout the state. And I will, what I was talking about in that previous comment is anything, I believe, above 3%, the entity can pass down to the consumer as a straight pass-through. So why this doesn't necessarily get looked at more often is because previous councils have made the determination that you're hitting the end consumer either way. And so, yes, we would increase the city's revenue, but you'd also be taking it out of potentially your community. And with that, I'll take any franchise fees questions.
Any questions from council? See you none?
And then finally, I potentially talking about a reduction in service level, which we've done twice in the last five years. This does not require any voter requirement. The revenue impact is a status quo. We keep doing what we can with what we have. The pros for this, obviously, is there's not an additional burden to the community as far as charging some other new fee rate and revenue. But the con is, as I saw in previous financial conversations and in the numbers, it's more expensive to provide the service that we're currently providing. So if revenues stay flat, at some point, we would need to potentially reduce those services, which in the general fund typically means people. And with that, I'll take any questions regarding that before I pass it on to Aaron.
Any questions on reduction in level of service? Don't see any? Thank you.
Thank you to both chiefs and JC to your presentation today. And thank you, council, for your patience and and very good questions with regards to this important topic. You know, in closing, before I get to my last slide, I I just want to state that public safety efforts are essential, pillars of a safe, resilient and thriving Grants Pass. Matching appropriate levels of service with sustainable funding will help in prioritizing prevention of reaction, building trust and engagement, ensuring faster, more effective services in response, strengthening community resilience. And we should also not forget something internal. And that is making sure we're creating an environment that's safe and appropriate for our most valuable asset, my colleagues. The dedicated professionals in public safety are the ones who help implement your strategic plan and help deliver the high quality of life our residents expect and deserve. We have heard today how we are at a point where our staffing to workload is creating a service level that is not sustainable. It's one of the reasons why we're here today, besides your desire to look at matching revenues and level of service with community desires. But we here today and the individuals you heard from today are here to ask for your assistance in helping us create an environment that is healthy for our public safety staff. Future call to action is ultimately council's discretion, as this is a workshop item and there's no external pressures associated with when you need to make a decision. Potential call to actions, level of service. What we're looking for from a, from a council perspective is direction from from council. Would you like to increase level of service based on what you heard today or have further discussions on that? Do you believe after what we talked about today that we have appropriate levels of service? Or would you like to see, and have you heard from the community, that we need to decrease some of our levels of service? If you are looking at and desire and interest in exploring additional increases in level of service, we can schedule future workshops to discuss the phased-in approach. You've heard today from both the police chief and the fire chief that there are a number of FTEs that we'd recommend moving forward with. By no means are we recommending that we just jump in and hire all those at once. It'd basically be impossible to do so anyhow. We would look at wanting to phase in approaches if we're looking at increased services. And then also, if you're looking at wanting to increase service service levels, we do need to take a look at what JC really concluded the presentation on is what type of revenues or service reductions would you be interested in in order to match that sustainable level of service with a good, sustainable funding source? And those were listed above. So with that, Mayor, I turn it over to you to to request additional direction from council.
Is there any follow-up questions? I have one question. So currently, public safety is funded by property taxes. But there's always been a disconnect with, and I think I've actually reached out to JC on this before, and I know this has been a topic before. But do we have an idea of unrealized property tax from the many people in businesses in our town that are registered as 501(c) and are tax exempted?
I don't know if we have the exact number, but we could probably, I think we end up with a list of properties that we can get from the county that qualify for those. And I think that's previous information requests that the the DIA's has had in regards to that subject.
Yeah, I know it's been previous conversations. I was just thinking it's, it's just be interesting to see that.
That was one of the discussions I think previous council looked at and asked about when it came to a utility fee, which we implemented, which provided an opportunity for some of those nonprofits that do provide and do receive resources from our public safety, but at no cost to them. And that the utility fee actually provided an opportunity for them to help cover some of the costs of serving them.
Correct. And just to clarify, too, it's not necessarily, the 501(c) doesn't blanket all nonprofit. It's also a lot of the medical industries utilize that as well.
Yes.
And they own a lot of commercial property in our town. I'll bring it back to the council for any questions or further discussion. Joel?
It's not up to me, but these are my thoughts. Due to the discussion of predicted revenue and predicted expenses, predicted leftovers, estimated wages versus actual wages, very conservative and appropriately so estimates of revenue and expenditures, and incremental changes in staffing, and our policy that has been very well implemented, and I have to compliment the city manager, overtime savings, and a small but significant possible decrease in insurance. I think we need to look at a incremental hiring for next year and not have any additional revenue. And with that, then, I would suggest that we monitor and see where we come out. And at that point in time, I think we can still have adequate time if if it drains down our reserves. That is beyond what we're comfortable with, we can make changes. The other thing I'm thinking is, right now, the. The other thing I'm thinking is, um, right now, the atmosphere in the community is not really supportive of additional taxes at this time. Uh, so anything that would require a, a vote, um, I think we're going to have to demonstrate the increase in services. Uh, they had a, they had an increase, what, last year? Two years ago? When, when, when we put the fee on?
Last year. Last year.
Last year. And there was no increase in services. It was just existing. So I think we need to take a little bit of risk. Uh, and I know that we're risk adverse in that. And I'll take responsibility, but, uh, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, uh, all powerful and, uh, everyone would suffer if I'm wrong. So, and if I'm right, uh, we can, we can still adjust and change course. So I would say that we, we ask the, the city manager and staff to come back with an incremental increase in approach and at this point in time, no increase in taxes.
Rob?
Yeah, I, I basically agree with what Joel just said with, uh, one question, I guess, to J C that was never at least, I didn't understand if, if he addressed it. So when we talked about having, uh, ending fund balances, uh, that exceeded our, our 25% by quite a bit, like six million more than our, what happens when you said that we need that to be able to carry us through the months when the, uh, property taxes are not coming in? So what happens at that point if we fell below, uh, essentially our balance, our working, our working, uh, our working balance? What happens? Because that, I guess that's what you were saying was the only negative, uh, explaining why we can't have these, a $15 million ending balance and it's not really a real number because we need that money along the way? If, if I understood what you said correctly?
Yeah, so hopefully I'll get-
What happens if we, if we, if we need that money along the way and don't have it?
Right. And so currently, just as a reminder, with a 15-ish million balance, it's, gives you about 38% in the, that fund balance percentage. But we budgeted all the way down to 25, meaning we're set up to spend more than we bring in. So in the event that you want to add increased expenditures just from that variable, right? That means you're going to need to adjust the 25% to be lower because you are adding FTE, increasing the cost. And ergo, the budget policy would need to be adjusted to accommodate how far you want to lower it. Doesn't mean that that's what we'll actually end up because maybe we can't fill the positions or maybe we find savings in other avenues or increase revenues through other alternatives. It just from a apples to apples comparison, if you add FTE into the general fund, I would think that we would be drawing down even further than where we are as far as budget.
But, and then, and then also to further answer your question, if there is a gap, let's say we don't have enough funding to get us through until we receive tax revenues, which I think is one of the questions you were asking, how, what do we do? That one of the things I think J C can highlight on this also is we'd likely, and I think some cities do this, we, they do like an internal loan fund, uh, to the general fund. It costs the general fund money to do that, to get us through until we get, uh, our, our tax revenues in November, December.
Uh, yeah, let me address that. Uh, actually, for cities that have really low general fund, fund balance policies, they actually go negative throughout the year. And there's nothing in any financial reporting or any rules that says you can't go negative middle of the year. You just can't end the fiscal year in a negative. So technically, you could go below the waterline, not just the, the 25%. You can go to negative 5% at any one point as far as where you're at. You just need to make sure that you end the year above, uh, zero.
Okay.
And so some people manage that by taking interfund loans to help get you through, um, if that is the case. But there are examples throughout the state that people have only 5% general fund fund balance policies.
I appreciate that clarification. And I, this may be a really stupid question, but, um, earlier when, uh, Indra asked if people are not, no longer paying their full property taxes in November and I, it appears as if they're stringing it out throughout the year, does that in some way help us in those, in those lean months?
No.
It should, it shouldn't, but it, but, well, the money's coming in then in those lean months, right?
But you, I can't guarantee that they're going to turn it in by June 30th. So we're going to collect it, but it could be five, 10 years down the road even.
You're talking about, well, you're talking about the ones that are, uh, maybe going to default or whatever.
That is correct.
That's not what I, I guess.
And so if the, if I haven't received it, I don't know if they're not going to not default or pay it in the last quarter. And so at this point, if I haven't received the revenues, I would think that it's going to be delinquent and the timing of receiving those revenues is up to the, the property at that point.
Okay. Based on, I guess, what you, uh, what J C just said, I, I would, I would support, uh, what Joel suggested.
Uh, Victoria?
And that seems like a really wonderful, uh, fix right now to me as well. But I wonder, um, does this affect the bond for the water treatment? Does the inter, internal loan fund, it would, would that protect the water treatment plant?
Uh, to answer your question, maybe. Don't know yet. Um, depending on the timing of which you reduce the fund balance policy and when we submit for the water treatment plant, um, and our credit rating and/or the avenue that we go through. So what I'm talking about is there are full faith and credit options that utilize the general fund backing that have less of a revenue requirement impact to the utilities. So if you reduce the general fund's credit rating by lowering the fund balance, potentially we will cross that off the list to go forward as a piece of our funding options for the water treatment plant and then purely put it on, uh, the potential revenue bonds of the water. But again, that's depending on how far you lower it. It's just one variable in how you calculate the credit rating, uh, of a fund.
Uh, Indra?
Uh, yes, I would just say that, um, our decreasing quality of life here in town is not sustainable and fire and police are on the forefront of that and facing the brunt of the horribleness that, that we're seeing out there. But also the cost of living, um, increases in our town is not sustainable too for many people, which is why businesses are leaving and residents are leaving, um, our community. And so I would, I agree. I, I'm not for any of these revenue increases because as we know, they just affect the consumer. I mean, it's all passed down to the consumer. So the cost of living just keeps increasing here. So I am for taking the risk and lowering the, the reserve percent, um, for now and, and, uh, increasing our level of service only for fire and police. I would go a step further and suggest that we should look at, uh, all of our other services and look at where we could possibly have reductions in levels of service in others so we can keep our public safety, um, top notch. Thanks.
Eric?
So we have some tough decisions to make here. Increasing taxes is not an option for me. Uh, I am not going to endorse that at all. I agree with what, uh, many on the council here have said so far. I mean, we live in Oregon, so Oregon has its laws that it has passed. We're seeing the side effects of that. Taxes are very high here and we can't afford anymore. We have to live by their rules and regulations and, uh, we're seeing, again, we're seeing the effects of that right now. We, we have been targeted as a city. It's obvious. And that's left the police department and the fire department in, in a bad shape because of the amount of overworked individuals that are there and underpaid. So we're seeing this, the side effects of that right now, which is pretty infuriating to me and should be pretty infuriating to all of, uh, the Grants Pass taxpayers. So where do we go from, from here? We've got some tough decisions to make in terms of what we're going to cut where, but I'm going to take the stance that police and fire department take priority. Thank you.
Um, Victoria?
So I think it would be interesting for us to see, um, how much the city is having to, uh, pay because of the leave act. And, um, it just seems to me, and, and so correct me if I'm wrong, that it's an unfunded mandate. So, or maybe it doesn't quite fit that description. But it would be very interesting to see what a burden that is to the city and, uh, if it in any way equals or is anywhere near in the ballpark of what, uh, we're needing to increase for levels of service. So, uh, is there, is there some way that we might see those numbers? I would just be very interested to see them. Not that, I mean, I, and I still agree with everyone that, uh, yeah, I, I don't think we can increase fees or taxes at this time. It's just, it's too tough of a time for, for the people of our community.
Joel?
Or Mayor before.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Go ahead, J C.
So we, yeah, so, uh, finance doesn't specifically do it, but HR is not here to represent themselves. We do track some of those hours and things. Uh, some of it may not equate as far as true dollars because it is like a leave without pay status that you can take in some of those extended leaves. Um, but we should be able to pull up the number of hours in which somebody's utilizing those.
Oh, okay. And the, and the dollar amount attached to that? I'd love to see that. That would be really educational for me. Thanks.
I just warn you that the dollar amount is potentially not a city cost because we're having to backfill in overtime and so that becomes a little washy as far as what the dollar value is. But we could definitely provide the hours.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Joel?
Just real quick, um, I, I, I'm not pro or for or against taxes, but I don't think this is the time. I think we need to, uh, monitor. I need to, I think we need to increase the level of service incrementally and then at the end of next year, see where we're at. Uh, because we do have to balance our budget. We do have to provide services for the public. And the other thing about it, we're all in this together and we got some great staff. Uh, we got some good council people and we'll see what we can make happen, um, both financially and public safety wise.
Anybody else?
So it sounds like the sentiment is stay the course and get some more information about re, increasing FTEs incrementally? Is that what I got of that?
What I heard was, and please let me know if there's anything that needs to change this, is that for next budget year, we're providing a budget that will increase FTE maybe incrementally. And if it requires a reduction in our reserve fund, that would also be expressed to council. If that's the case, we'll be providing you with what the incremental recommendation is and what the potential is on the reduction, if needed, of our reserve before we have budget committee discussion. So we have clear policy direction from council that that's where you are wanting to go from a service level perspective.
Yeah, and I'll add on to that question for clarifying for me. Is there a baseline percentage that you want to, to hit? So is it 20%? As far as the target? Whether we come above that, that'd be the thing, but we don't want to go below a certain number. Is there a temperament there?
Joel, you want to add something?
Um, yeah, so, um, I was thinking actually something a little more aggressive, Aaron, and that may make you feel uncomfortable. If the council feels so forth, uh, agreeable, I would authorize those before the end of the fiscal year. And then I would monitor the budget so that we can make decisions based on what the actual year-end numbers are going to be, not only for this year, but the next year. And, um, and you would come back with a incremental, we don't want to do everything at once when we're monitoring. We don't want to take a big risk, but we want to take some risk, um, this fiscal year, increase our services. And then, uh, at next year's budget, we not only would, uh, look at the higher level of service, but we would actually see where we're at financially and not as predicted, but actual. Um, that's, that's what I was thinking. Um, and it, it, the, the, the advantage of that is it, it doesn't take, uh, it doesn't take a, a big risk. We, we can, um, uh, change course with maybe revenue, uh, what we need to do, but, uh, we're going to be dealing with actual numbers then rather than predictions because our predictions are, are pretty conservative, which I don't disagree with. But I think if we take a little bit of risk here and see what the, what the, uh, results are, that would be revealing either direction. So I, I, I would, I would argue for the increase in staffing, uh, incrementally, that the, that the staff would come back with that, not at the beginning of next July, but at the, at the, um, this year. I would, I would do it this year and then monitor this year's budget, um, to, uh, see how much of a fool or, or, uh, I am, uh, to, to suggest that, but, and I'm just kidding on that, but, um, I'm, I'm willing to take that risk. I don't want to take a big risk. We're talking about half a year with increased staffing with no additional funding. We can always add to the funding mix. But if we did that and there was need for more funding, it would be evident to our public. Whereas right now, it's not evident to our public that we need that. In fact, I've had several people come up and tell me there's no way they're going to vote for any of this because they think that we already have the money, right or wrong. I didn't argue with them, maybe I should have. But we need to, uh, keep our credibility and, and the best way to do that is to make the decision to increase our level of service incrementally and monitor the budget. That's what I was thinking.
So I have a question for that then. If you, if the council's deciding to ask staff, um, to increase FTEs in a incremental time period, what does that look like for us making the policy decision for the, for reducing the contingency percentage?
So I think that's where my question comes in as to how far you want to go down. And so if we have a, here's the bare minimum that we want you to keep in there, it's easier for us to back into that number.
Good.
Versus ethereal, just add FTE and we'll figure it out. That's just my two cents because then it's measurable.
What are we currently at right now? Percentage?
So we are at 38. We budgeted all the way down to 25. And so when I bring the next budget around, do, which again, I'm guessing the cost will increase. Um, and so meeting that 25% is going to be hard. So by policy, adjusting that number down to either 20, 15, 10, whatever the council is and giving us that direction would be easier for us to manage.
Okay. Um, so that you have one task in hand beforehand, so I got Rob, Victoria, Joel, Indra. So let's start with Rob.
So J C, when you, like for instance, this year, if our ending fund balance had been the actual 25%, that is our policy, we right now would have $6 million that we could, could invest in public safety. Right? I mean, because right now we're, it's, uh, the ending fund balance is 15 million, 25% would be nine something. It's a $6 million difference. So when you talk about having that percentage be at 20%, it has to be there throughout the entire year? How does that work? Does it have to just be at, at, at budget time? What, what does that mean? So if that's the case, in this year, we, we, we would have had $6 million. We could have potentially invested in public safety and still been at 25%. So, um, you know, I, I understand that this is like nails down the blackboard for a money guy like you, but, but it's, it's, uh, you know, if we, if we were going to add, what was it, the 12 employees, 12 public safety employees total? That's roughly, what, 2.4 million dollars roughly? So roughly 200,000 a pop?
Sure.
So, so, and we have an extra, you know, we would have an extra 6 million. So, and we have an extra, you know, we would have an extra $6 million. You know, I don't see why we couldn't, again, go more like what Joel was saying, be a little bit more aggressive. Had we done that this year, we still would have been ahead. We still would have been ahead, you know, roughly $4 million bucks, so.
So, you are realizing that savings by departments not spending everything that they have budgeted. And so, when we budget at 100% of everything, we draw it down 13% or that dollar figure to get us down to 25. So, when I go to rebudget, the policy goes off of the budget and where we set it, and so we always budget to spend 100%. Again, lowering that number is a target. We may end up above that like we've seen, but we're ending above that because of vacancies and other savings in other areas, not necessarily indicative of what we've budgeted for. If we have everybody at every seat, we would draw that down tremendously faster.
Okay, I totally get that. Real world, okay, according to your document, which you gave us, for the last 10 years, we've been, you know, at least $10 million with an ending balance. No, in the real world, we actually have the money. On paper, if we want to, you know, play the paper game, then we don't have, you know, it may not work out, but the real world, the last 10 straight years, and probably if we went back, it'd probably be 10 or 20 or 30 more years, you know, we do have an ending balance. So, I guess, you know, as Joel was saying, well, if we were to take some risk, that things are going to continue as they have for the last several decades, we might want to increase our public safety this year because, starting right away, because we could afford to do it.
That was a fair assessment, yeah. You typically end the year with savings, which has allowed for us to start off the next year and have that imbalance to afford the current staffing level, but we've also had a 30% and now just recently a 25% fund balance policy too. And so, in previous years, even though that number is highest in that chart that I showed, we're meeting a higher fund balance policy too. And so, part of that discretion or discrepancy, rather, is showing that there's a difference between the temperament 10 years ago to today and where we're at financially with that imbalance. And hopefully, I didn't confuse more people, but yes, you have the cash, but budgetarily, when you put those people back in the seats and add those, we'll have to budget that extra expense, which if we're already having an imbalance, potentially we're going to create even more of an imbalance and running the risk of if everybody is in the seat, we're fully staff, we would be drawing that down rather quickly.
Joel?
So, if you do it incrementally, you're still going to have, what do you call it when people leave?
Attrition.
Attrition. And so, you're still going to have flexibility at the year end. It reduces your risk even more. So, why not? And see where we end up. And we need to do it now so we can find out with half the year gone by, see how things work and see how good the staff can do and everybody can do. And if it doesn't work out, you've got different options. You have attrition of the extra positions, you have looking at additional revenue, all those things. So, I don't see it being a much risk at all, to be honest with you. And the only risk we have is as you prepare the budget and you look at projected expenditures at full employment versus a very conservative revenue source, we're going to be at 20% or 15%. And you know, if that's not the reality at the end of the year, which we'll find out through monitoring, we'll be okay.
Absolutely, but the policy states that I'm to bring you forward something that is within or over that 25% budgetarily. So, I'm just trying to get clarification there of how far is staff giving the levity to push that?
So, JC, one of the things that might help provide us direction here so we can close this up and continue with our meeting is, would you be able to, as I continue to talk here, provide me with a potential dollar amount of what 5% reduction in the reserve fund would be? And I guess you don't need time, it sounds like. Okay, what would, if council said, bring us back a proposal to stair-step in additional FTE, that would present a budget, that would project a budget at 20%, what dollar amount is that?
So, every percent is approximately $400,000 right now. And so, if you do 5%, you're freeing up about $2 million.
Okay, so, and then to continue that discussion, best-case scenario, we stair-step some of this in and realize that there's very little or no change because of the external environment, internal environment, costs, et cetera, are balancing out, and we stay within the 25% even though we might temporarily reduce it. Temporary reduction is important for us to take. Worst-case scenario is, I think the two worst-case scenarios are in two positions. One, I am a year now, two years from now or whatever, charged with laying off individuals because we can't afford them, or council's back is against the wall and they're now saying, okay, we have to increase revenue in some form or fashion. I see this similar as what I've seen in grants throughout the federal government and sometimes the state government where they're like, here you go, here you go, take this, here's, we'll provide this funding opportunity for you for operations for three years. And then you get stuck on that and you haven't come up with a plan on how to make it sustainable, and at the end of the three years, you've got two options, lay them off or somehow come up with a revenue stream because the public is used to that level of service and you have to implement revenue. So, from a best practice perspective, we would have a plan of if this does not work, we will do this, or this is a stopgap measure of let's hire now and this is the funding mechanism we're going to start working on because we know it's going to take 18 months to implement.
Well, the other thing is, I'm not sure that worst-case outcomes always happen, and you don't ever want to work towards worst-case outcomes. You want to work towards your best case, and I think we can do that. And so, to assume that that's going to be the case, I don't think it is. I would say the incremental approach would maybe say what was requested, we include that at 50% this year.
Yeah, and by no means am I saying that I was pushing that I'm focusing on worst-case, but I think it needed to be brought up in today's meeting that those are two worst-case scenarios along with the best-case scenario.
And there could be a worst-case scenario if we do nothing, and that's not pretty either.
So, the question at hand is still, so JC will feel comfortable, is if council is willing to, and you can correct me in any statement I'm saying here, if council is willing to take your 25% contingency down to 20% for fiscal year 2026? Sorry, well, yeah, I got two more, I'm just trying to see. That's going to be something that we're going to decide in a minute, but I do have two people that still want to comment, so I had Indra and Victoria. Go ahead, Indra.
So, I too agree, we need to start now and not wait till next year. I mean, I think the public is on edge with safety out there and we need to do something right away. I'm willing to take that risk and then I, and JC, you talk about we don't have all the seats, we have vacancies, so, and Aaron, I'm sure you've thought about that, but maybe some of those vacancies don't need to be filled right now because they're not as important as police or fire, so we need to figure that part out. And then, I would suggest we have what it looks like with a 5% down to 20% and also maybe even down to 15. Let's take a look at that, or 18 or something, even a little more aggressive.
Victoria?
Yeah, I think Joel kind of, when he was talking, pretty much it answered my question, but, so, I would definitely, I mean, I'm all thumbs up for lowering it to 20% and looking into raising levels of service right now. And just completely different topic, I wanted to make sure that JC also, earlier Clint talked about properties that are 501(c)(3)'s that aren't necessarily nonprofits, and I want to make sure that we get a list of those as well, just wanted to throw that in there. Thank you.
Okay, Rob?
I just wanted to add one last thing. JC, I don't want, I want to express gratitude that you're giving us every possible warning. I get it, and it goes against kind of the way your DNA is made, and I get it, you know, that's fine, that's why you're in that position, you're supposed to be that guy, but I appreciate it, but then we got to do what we got to do.
At the end of the day, it's your guys' decision. I'm just trying to give you guys the most information and from where I sit, it's not necessarily a financial recommendation that I can clearly make, but I understand what predicament you're in and we'll do the best that we can as a staff.
Thank you, JC. So, at this point, if there's no discussion, I would be looking for council to define your incremental increase in FTEs as well as define the lowering of the contingency, what number you want to get to. So, let's do FTCs first.
Mayor, I think ultimately what would be best is if we provide, if you provided us with the policy direction of where you want your fund balance and we come back to you with our recommendation from an operation perspective on what that FTE looks like.
That's probably a more logical situation, so, go ahead, Joel.
Well, I'd almost like to do it the other way around, Aaron, where we talk about what the level of service would be and then you tell us what the fund is going to go down to.
We can definitely provide you with incremental FTE and how we would approach it and what that would do to the fund balance, if that's what you'd like to do for the next workshop.
It would be no extra work either way, right?
No?
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, so, it looks like there's a recommendation to direct staff to bring back incremental FTEs and the decrease in contingency. Is that what you're looking for? I might not have said exactly what you said, but.
And specifically, one bumper, so to speak, or the max we're going to look at, was it 13 positions was the original ask by public safety? Total of 13 positions, police and fire?
I forget.
Whatever that was, that would be one end of the spectrum of what you're going to bring back to us, and the other end of the spectrum is what we have now.
Yeah, I forget exactly what we recommended previously, but I do recall that that was a five-year implementation and there were only a couple positions every year to get up to that 13.
Okay, well, show us what that would look like and then we can choose from the menu.
With that, do you have direction on what they're asking for?
Yes.
Thank you, sorry for all the confusion. All right. So, at that, this point, I believe we will conclude our public safety, service and funding presentation and discussion, and that brings us to agenda review. Does anybody have any questions or comments in regards to agenda? Rob?
Yeah, I'd like to, I guess, either put it on the next meeting or next workshop, discussion on removing a member of the budget committee.
Okay, it's been recommended by, I don't have an agenda with me, so. Let me write that on the back. Thank you. Okay, so, sorry, it was to remove a member of the budget committee?
I'd like to either put it on the next meeting or the next workshop or the nearest workshop, discussion about removing a member of the budget committee, yes.
Yeah, we could do that one of two ways, like Council Pell said, if you wanted to move it quickly enough, you could. We still have time to make a change in Wednesday night's meeting, and you can have a business meeting where you take action on such a thing after discussion, or you can have a workshop or you can forward it to the next business meeting. It's ultimately up to council to determine. Council, you are the ones that appoint the advisory in budget committee members, et cetera, and you have the authority to remove.
Well, I would prefer that the next business meeting, but if people feel they need a workshop first, that's okay too.
Okay, so, Rob's recommended to have, you correct me if I'm wrong here, his best preference would be to put it on the next meeting, which would be Wednesday, to remove a budget committee member or to go into a workshop, to remove or to put it on the next Wednesday meeting? What's the sentiment on that? Thumbs up, thumbs down? No, the next works Wednesday. So, put it on the meeting for Wednesday. So, I got one, two, three, and two, four up and two down, five up and two down. Nope, five, four up and three down. Let's do that one more time, ready? One, two, three. So, the first. So, Rob would prefer if we could put, removing a budget committee member onto Wednesday's meeting, this Wednesday's meeting or a future workshop. So, for this Wednesday meeting, thumbs up or down? One, two, three, one, two, three, Rick? Up or down? Wednesday meeting, up. So, it's got the majority on Wednesday meeting. Okay, can you add that to the?
Yes, I'll be added to the agenda, thank you.
Kathleen?
I was wondering if there was some talk about the Riverside Park power not working well for some of the concerts in the park or some of the events that were going in in the park, and I just wondered if that got settled or got upgraded or something got fixed there.
Well, I know through the process of doing the band shell, we are getting Phase 3 electrical put in there, which is going to be a big plus to those individuals and groups that are renting there, because we have historically had, sometimes the power is overloaded by some of the events. The Phase 3 will basically fix all that. I'm not sure about your, the recent issue that you may be talking about, Brad would probably be better.
Well, I think it was when Park Watch had their kids festival, they had to bring in generators to run their.
Yeah, generators are often like, Active Club brings in generators. Generators right now at this point in time in the parks is a necessity if you're doing a larger event or you've got electrical that you want in an area of the park that we don't have electrical. So, again, we will be able to provide better service to larger events once that band shell is in and we have that Phase 3 established.
Do we have a timeframe on that?
We're looking at having the band shell up and running for next year's concerts in the park season.
Indra?
Can I get an update on where we are with the grant proposal?
Yeah, Stephanie can give you an update, and we were going to provide that update to you today.
Oh, thank you. On Friday, we did distribute the follow-up information that we had received, the work group met this morning. At this point, the majority seems to believe we have a single one that we are going to pursue a contract with, and we will be bringing that back to council as soon as possible. We're shooting for the 20th for council to see that with a workshop on the 18th.
So, council will just see the one that the task force is recommending, we won't see any other information? Can we see the other information or no? And is that available?
You guys set up a process of scores into the, scoring the criteria within the grant. You guys, you spent many time on that, so the scoring committee will give you a score, and I believe it was the sentiment of the scoring committee that they would bring you the best applicant that scored the highest within the grant process.
Okay, I understand we were getting scores, it was not, I did not understand that we had decided we would just see one and one of the scores, like we're not going to be able to see all of the scores for each applicant?
The normal process for an RFP is to bring you the one that best meets the criteria that were established.
If I asked to see all of the scores, can I get that?
I believe the information becomes public information once an award has been made. So, once you've made a decision on the one that's presented to you, the information would be public information.
So, my question would be the one, and I have no idea, I have no idea who's applied or what the scores are or how they've been done, and not that I'm questioning the task force, but just for me to make a vote on it, I think I would need to like see more to compare because I'm completely blind on it because I'm not part of the task force.
There will be a staff report, there will be the information materials on the one that's recommended, and you'll make your decision, does this meet the city's needs and what we were looking for? So, you'll have all of the information about that applicant, what they're proposing and why we believe that they are the best match for what the council was looking for.
And it won't be transparent to either the council, the rest of the council or the public before the grant is awarded? Then it'll be too late.
No other RFP is done that way. We, this is the way other RFPs are done, you get the final recommendation. You get the final recommendation.
Had I known that before, I probably would have tried to be on the task force. I didn't realize that that was how we were doing it. I don't know if other counselors understood that.
Rick? Oh, sorry.
I just feel like I would be really not as informed as I could be to make a decision. That's all.
So.
Go ahead, Rick.
Further elaboration of that, when we do a bid for a road, we get to see the different people that bid on it, the amounts that they bid. Is this because it's an RFP, it's a totally different instrument?
We could provide that basic information whether or not, because the primary criteria was 150 capacity within six months and a request for up to $1.2 million. We could provide whether or not the applicants met those specific criteria for you.
But not the rest of the criteria on that only one?
Those were our basic criteria. Everything else was in addition to, but our bare minimum that applicants had to meet were those things, ADA compliant, 150 capacity with, and the $1.2 million budget.
Okay, thank you.
So we're still on agenda review. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I would be looking for, actually we. So we do have exec, do you have questions?
I motion to adjourn and move into executive session.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to adjourn and go into executive session. Yes, it's been a little bit long, so I'm a little bit long in the tooth here. Roll call vote real quick. Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Okay.